Called to order the City, Lincoln City City Council Meeting, November 8th, 2014, December. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Egleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quandt.
Here.
And, whoa.
You forgot me.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
My sheet is changed.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance, please. We have, first agenda item is comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a member, or a number of the persons present who have signed up. Okay, and we have, is it Ben Graham? Thank you.
Mayor, councilors, should I tell my address?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you have to speak right into the mic and just name an address would be great.
765 Southwest 28th Street, Lincoln City.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilors, I find it very interesting and contradictory that one of the arguments against VRDs and tourism here is that when we are primarily a community with our main industry being tourism, yet when a property owner wants to expand their commercial space, which would attract a larger tenant, bring in middle-management jobs, or jobs for that matter, we turn them down. We're doing all this while spending public money to develop property that is in direct competition with the private developers. These developers want to invest in our city, and yet we're asking the citizens to bear the burden of higher taxes, higher water bills, and more gas tax, as you've communicated in your recent highly manipulative survey, just recently completed by the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mark Deason, I own property at 2703 Southwest Beach, and I live in Vancouver, Washington. I also represent the Lincoln City Vacation Home Association for this statement. While I disagree with much of the content of 2014-21, which was passed into law last month, I applaud City Council for postponing 22 and 23 until tonight. I strongly urge the council to do the right thing and postpone further action on these ordinances which enact potentially severe consequences for exclusion from the newly-created VR zone until application of this zone to all, to portions of all four quadrants of the city has been given sufficient opportunity. Passing these ordinances tonight with an extended start date is not the same.
Thank you, Chair. Bob Gibson.
Bob Gibson, 1744 Northeast 6th Drive. I'm here representing the Lincoln City Public Arts Committee as their chair this evening, and to thank you for your support and interest in public art in Lincoln City. We just had a dedication this afternoon of a piece of art that has been installed up by the Culinary Center, and a couple weeks ago, we had a dedication of a piece of public art at the Cultural Center, and it's just so important for our community. There's a concept of essential but not sufficient, and of course, everybody understands, and I think there's no debate, as far as the importance of streets, water, sewer, police, and those kinds of things that we readily admit are essential for a community. It's important that we acknowledge and value the other things such as art, cultural arts, fine art, parks, recreation, and those amenities which really are woven into the fabric of our community and contribute to the quality of life in the community. So, again, the committee wishes to express their gratitude for your support. We're not a real big deal as far as your budget goes, but we appreciate being there, and that's important to us. On another note, we are also working with the group, working on the 50th anniversary for Lincoln City, and we have a contest that will be announced within the next month or so for mailboxes for citizens to produce art on their mailboxes, and there'll be a contest, and we're going to ramp that up to go along with the 50th anniversary of the city. So, wanted to let you know about that. I think it's important that you're aware of what's going on with the Lincoln City Art Committee, and once again, thank you for your support. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Bob, would you be sure to share and give our thanks from the council to your committee for the work they have done, because as you've noted in the last month, two new pieces of art have been dedicated, and it's nice to see and be told about the art and see it visibly on the street, so to speak. So, thank you for your work and their work. Carolyn Plummer.
My name's Carolyn Plummer. My company is Pacific Retreats Vacation Home Rentals here in Lincoln City. And as you consider the 2014-22 and 23 this evening, I'd like you to consider that the concept of the VR zones and what you've laid out is not altogether opposite of what I believe. However, this is entirely premature, in my opinion. The VR zone, we don't know where you anticipate putting that. You have divided the city into four quadrants, and you tackled the northwest quadrant first, laying out a sample of where the VR zone would be, but it's not complete. It only goes down to northwest 21st Street. One might say there's no residential zones, R1 zones, or R15, or whatever. South of that, there is a small section, but the question is, there's a very large RM zone that is not addressed. And to me, if you divide the city into quadrants, it should be a full quadrant. We should know exactly what the layout would look like before going any further. Also, the rest of the city, we should know exactly what you have in mind before anybody decides whether it's going to work or not for the people who depend on vacation rentals for their livelihood and their investments, huge investments. I would urge you this evening to postpone voting on the rest of these ordinances until the entire four quadrants of the city have been addressed and everything is laid out on the table. Another thing that I find very troubling is the city's attitude that if you pass these last two ordinances afterwards, if there is any dissent whatsoever, then the 30-day limitation will be enforced. I think this is not the way we do things in Lincoln City. I've lived in this area 37 years, and I have never seen or heard of anything such as a threat of retribution like I have seen on this matter, and we just don't do that thing. If you, like myself, have lived here any longer than five years, you know we have had disputes over the years, some pretty darn intense, but we never made threats for anybody who wanted to dissent and have a different opinion. And I think it's a slippery slope that we go on when we start threatening our fellow residents. So, I'd like you to consider that. Again, I encourage you to postpone the decision on the two ordinances this evening until you identify where the proposed VR zones would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Marty Moody.
Well, Councilman and Mayor, I am Marty Moody. I live at, the home I have is--
Can you move over to the mic, please? Thank you.
1739 Northwest 35th Place in Lincoln City. I've owned my home for 20 years and have maintained it extremely well. I've had a lot of family and friends, and just friends of friends enjoy our home, and it's always received lots of compliments. So, we've done a beautiful job of caring for it, and we've certainly introduced a lot of people from around the United States, as I'm sure all of us have, to our beautiful coast in Oregon City. So, I have a big heart for Lincoln City, and I just recently have become a VRD participant as of July of this year. So, I'm new to the process, and been learning and reading, and listened to the Lars Lawson Show, and found out more about it there, too. But I did want to address with these changes again. I've been impressed with the fact that to be a participant of a VRD, not only do we have a major investment in our home that we're allowing people to stay in, but there is quite a process we have to go through in order to get a license, and so I commend the city for making sure people are really qualified and audited, and that we are providing a good home with all of these restrictions to make sure that it works for the city and the neighbors as well. And if not, there's retribution that the city can take to stop it. So, I have been bewildered at the constant changes that we are having to go through all the time, and I quite honestly don't know the answer to this, but it feels like from the City Council and from the mayor that VRDs are not something that you are very supportive of or care for, and I can't understand why. This is a community for tourism, and it brings in a lot of economics. I know we've paid a lot of money just to get things ready here for our home and bringing new people into the area. So, it does seem contrary to a wonderful city like this that there would be any counter-movement to limit, or make difficult, or continually set challenges in front of VRD owners. So, I just wanted to bring that up. I look forward to learning more about it from all of you and watch what's going on. I do agree with the comments earlier about having ordinances when the whole plan has not been laid out yet. It's hard to know as a VRD owner. I'm reading it, but we are like four houses outside of this initial VRD area on this map that we just received, and so we're four houses. So, what does that mean to us? Because we've just put a lot of time, money, and effort into this home, and I'm not sure of how this is going to impact us as well as others, or why the city is taking these kinds of steps. So, I would ask you to really consider all of these reasons and be open to we, the people that vote and are participating and paying taxes here to support what I think we all have as a common goal. But I do ask that you support us and recognize the costs and all of the restrictions that keep coming up that cost us more and more money. Probably a good idea for them, but to have that and then all the VRD pushback all the time is very hard to understand, and doesn't feel very good either. So, anyway, I hope for continued economic growth for this community and for the VRDs, and I certainly hope if there is some kind of a VRD negativity amongst the City Council that you could kind of talk to us about it and understand better, because as a new person coming on, it really doesn't feel very good, and I can't find any basis in fact for it. So, thank you for listening to me, and I look forward to working with you more in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Warner.
My name is Jerry Warner, and I live at 1233 Lakewood. The majority of us are happy over the November election and are looking forward to a new mayor, a new city manager, and some new council members. Let's take a look at the city manager and council over the past few years. It is my understanding that a financial agreement between the city council and the city manager has been completed for his retiring. It would be a benefit for the new city manager for the city to pay Hawker his final check when the new city manager takes over. This would give the new manager a chance to make his own assessment of the city and work with staff, city staff members. I, for one, presume that you are hiring a very competent person that has many years of prior experience. When I reviewed their applications, it was, they were all very qualified. Here is a situation that really, that happened recently, and I feel taxpayers of Lincoln City should know about it. Mr. Hawker recently spent $9,218.63 of taxpayers' money hiring a local government personnel institute, person to derail a possible class-action lawsuit against the VCB director. The majority of the employees of the VCB supported this suit. The VCB director is retiring the first of the year. Then Hawker extends her employment another six months because he said he can't find a replacement. She is paid approximately $140,000 in salaries and benefits, a department that costs taxpayers $650,000 annually. You would think that an assistant director could handle a job until a replacement is found. Here's a few highlights of the council. The City Council has approved $10 million in purchase of properties which now don't pay any taxes in the county or city. The council has approved putting sewer and water rates increases in the budget without any separate rate hearings or any rate studies for the public to respond to. The city has no economic development program, has become known for its anti-business attitude pretty much all over the state. The Lighthouse Shopping Complex is a good example. Perhaps the city could pass a, pass out gasoline vouchers to shoppers to go shop in other cities. You, as a council, have allowed Mr. Hawker to build a $12.5 million empire over providing street and traffic improvements, which has been neglected for years. A $4 million police department with no accountability to council or public. The City Council approves the D-Lake undergrounding and doesn't have a clue what the final costs are going to be, because the project hasn't even been bid yet. Not $1 will ever be returned to the taxpayers. A look at a few projects that have been approved. The glass-blowing business in Taff, which Hawker, which taxpayers pay for because it's subsidized over $40,000 a year, and yet 85% of the glass balls for the city promotion are purchased from glass blowers in other cities. The Village of the Cascade was the most ridiculous thing this council has ever done, and then they turned down offers to buy the property that would have reimbursed the taxpayers. The same offer would have given the city the property within the area that it wanted, which was the Noel, free, gratis. Here's an update on what it costs the taxpayers. $2.5 million purchase price, $78,000 in lost property taxes, $173,000 is in the budget for maintenance of the area, $1 million for the pump station. This year alone, this year, taxpayers' costs are $3,751, and the city is just getting started on spending tax money on improving that subdivision, which had all been paid for by the developer. The city is now in the retail business, the land development business, and real estate business by buying homes with our tax dollars. The city manager and council are using taxpayers' money in direct competition with free enterprise. This council has not shown responsibility to the citizens of this city. I think it's time to recall the remaining council members. Happy holidays, taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Ross Smith.
Uh-oh. Hi. Honorable Mayor and councilors, before I begin, I want to mention that your attorney has labeled me an opponent of your efforts regarding vacation rentals, and I don't really feel that's a fair characterization. I, like you, only want what's best for our city, and while we may have different opinions on how to achieve our shared goals, I am not your opponent. I am, I volunteered a significant amount of time to provide you guys valuable feedback, and your attorney has incorporated some of that feedback into the laws, so I'm proud of that. So, I just have two quick points to make. First off, it's my strong belief that it'd be better if our city, for our city, if all the proposed VR maps were provided before we enact these new laws. Otherwise, it'll put a real damper on the real estate market, as many buyers will simply wait for the maps to be provided before they decide which house, you know, they're considering, whether it's inside or outside of VR zone. So, now, I know you all just wanted to vote and put this matter behind you, but, and I understand that sentiment, but nothing requires you to decide this issue tonight. You could wait until all the VR maps have been provided. They don't have to be the final maps, but simply proposals, so buyers have some sense of where things are going. This is all the more true as the laws won't even take effect until July 1st. So, I respectfully ask you to please consider providing all the proposed VR maps before you make your decision. Otherwise, the real estate market will suffer accordingly, just as we're starting to see some daylight there. And second, while I appreciate the time and effort we've put into the survey results that have been published, they do not accurately reflect the views of our city. For example, the average age of our city is about 41 years old, and the survey results are 65 years old. The respondents are, the average age is 65, so the results are significantly skewed. To find out the true will of the people, we need to take a random sampling of the results, so the average age is closer to the true age of our populace. This is called probability sampling, and it is the fundamental basis for all survey research. The survey results even mention, on page 13, that those under 30, 30 and under, are significantly underrepresented, and this should be addressed, and performing a probability sampling is the best way to achieve this goal. The survey also suggests that you consider surveying your taxpayers, as well as your voters, and for to enact new laws that greatly affect your taxpayers without considering their opinion as well is effectively allowing taxation without representation, and this is one of the big reasons why our country was founded in the first place. For government to be truly representative, it must listen to and take heed to all its citizens, not the least of which are its taxpayers. In fact, in the stairwell of this very building, we have Thomas Jefferson quoted as saying, "The will of the people is the only legitimate foundation of any government." And thank you for your service. Thank you.
Mary Ann Blanchard.
Mary Ann Blanchard, 4550 Northeast Union Loop. Mayor and council members, I encourage you to not pass the two ordinances that are on the agenda today regarding VRDs and their subsequent limitations until the maps have fully been decided upon. This will have great effect on people that are currently trying to sell their homes and those looking to purchase homes. Since there are no longer VRD permits being issued as of October 27th this year, and those wanting to offset the cost of purchasing their second homes, which would be eventually the retirement property, are limited to 30 rental nights per year until the new maps are decided upon. That means the market for selling desirable coastal properties will be severely limited. As a buyer that wants to live near the beach but not in a VR zone, they probably wouldn't look in Lincoln City until after the issue is solidified. Also, those who want to buy and have the possibility of renting more than 30 days will also not want to invest in Lincoln City until the issue is decided. Therefore, those folks that are currently have their home on the market will be at a distinct disadvantage over people who have their homes for sale in surrounding communities. The city is making homes here less desirable than other cities on the coast, therefore affecting housing prices. It is also widening the gap between the haves and the have-nots. Without the ability to rent out their vacation homes, only the well-off will be able to afford a second home, or pay, if they have 20% down or they can pay cash. Many of the current residents moved here permanently after having rented their homes for several years prior, so I urge you not to pass until you have everything solidified as to the zoning.
Thank you very much. Sandy Gruber.
Good evening, Sandy Gruber, 2106 Southeast 8th Street, Lincoln City. I'm here tonight to represent the Lincoln City 50th Celebration Committee. We're a group of citizens eager to celebrate Lincoln City's 50th anniversary in 2015, and I know there's a proclamation to be read later tonight, and I would just want to tie into that. First of all, I love that we have this process where people can dissent, agree, argue, debate in front of our elected officials, and although we don't all like it every time, I love that we are still able to do that. Tonight is the 50th anniversary of the election that created Lincoln City from its separate entities, and it's kind of exciting that we have a City Council meeting tonight, and I want to recognize that because that's what made us who we are, the tourism spot that people want to come to, a place to enjoy the beach and the fresh air that we have and get away from the traffic. And so, tonight is a great night to let everyone know that we are eager to celebrate our 50th anniversary all of 2015 in any way that anyone wants to share it. We have a logo that is out there for anyone to have. We have a Facebook page. I know that's not the be-all and end-all of everything, but you don't have to be on Facebook to get to it. It's Lincoln City 50th Celebration. If you Google that, you'll probably find our Facebook page. It'll keep you up to date on the events that are going to happen during the coming year. The first one, actually, is this week. Wells Fargo Bank is celebrating all week because of the anniversary of the election. Wells Fargo Bank is celebrating all week because of the anniversary of the election. They're gonna have cake on Friday, so even if you don't bank there, you might want to stop in and get a little sweet-toothed fix. New Year's Eve at Chinook Winds will begin the celebration at twelve oh one. Some special things going on there for the people celebrating. Also, on January first is the Dunk at Regatta Ground, so anyone who feels like jumping in Devil's Lake at eleven AM on January first, please join us. We'd love to get at least fifty people there. We'd welcome the city manager, for sure, mayor. We'd love to have you join and see if we can get at least fifty people there. I think we had about forty last year. January seventeenth and eighteenth Coastal Carvers Artistry and Wood Show at Chinook Winds Casino. If you've never been there, it's quite a show of carving skill. Each of these activities is doing something to recognize the fiftieth anniversary, and that's just in January. Also, in January, we'll be getting a year-long activity called Fifty Neighborly Acts, and there'll be more information about that later. But it's to do good deeds on a one-to-one basis, not with a group or by a group, and so we'll get more information out to you on that. But it's a year-long opportunity for people to do something one-on-one for people who need a little assistance. It will make this city the city that we all want to live in. We all moved here for one reason or another, but mostly it was because we wanted a small town, we wanted fresh air, we wanted to be able to surf. One of those things got us here, some of us, I guess, just for a job, but we love it here. And even with all the disagreements we have, we want it to be a great town, so let's clean it up, let's celebrate it, let's appreciate our visitors and say thank you to them when we see them on the beach, and happy anniversary, Lincoln City.
Great, thank you, Sandy. Sandy, would you just take a minute? Could you expand briefly on the committee that's behind this celebration? That I know it's very expansive with different organizations, but it's quite a, in itself, quite an organization.
Yeah, how do I explain it? It is anyone who wants to participate. We're more of an organization that is trying to just keep the reins on other activities. We're managing, we're making sure that people have access to the logo, know when other activities are, encouraging, for example, the Kiwanis or Bama or Chinook Winds, if they're doing an activity, to add in the Lincoln City Fiftieth in some fashion. A car show could focus on nineteen sixty-five cars or whatever, and we're just trying to promote that out to everyone. And Lincoln City is not the only organization having an anniversary next year. It's a big anniversary for the museum, it's fifty years for the hospital, it's twenty years for Chinook Winds, it's seventy-five years for the fire district. I'm forgetting some. There are quite a number of big anniversaries coming up this year, so there will be special celebrations going on, but they're all going to try and incorporate the fiftieth anniversary also.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so the committee's just kind of trying to keep it together.
And I think the committee, I guess, my point being is the chamber is a part of that, the community days group is there, and the city is involved, and the coordinating committee.
Yes, and it's anyone who wants to be on it, anybody from any organization or even an individual who really just wants to be in the know and help spread the word. It's spreading the word is the most important thing, and that's what we're trying to get as many people from as many organizations participating and calling it the committee, since we're not really putting anything on.
Well, a little later, we've got the proclamation, so I'll see if I can talk council into approving it, so.
Hopefully, they will.
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's it on the sign-ups, but this would be an opportunity to come up if you didn't have the opportunity to sign, that you still have a comment you'd like to make. Now would be a good time. Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda item. And our next agenda item is actually employee appreciation, and we have Mr. Hawker, our city manager, with fifteen years' recognition. So, Mr. Hawker, somehow we've got to get you center stage. I wasn't provided a long list of your accomplishments, but we, I think, much like the fiftieth celebration, it'll be for a number of days going forward. We have some placard boards in the courtroom that kind of showed the last fifteen years, different accomplishments, and a timeline. I got a kick out of, Mr. Hawker's only served three mayors, numerous councils, but three mayors. Saw on that timeline, three presidents and three governors compared to, I think it's Newport that's had four city managers in eight years. So quite accomplishment in itself, and I don't know what else to say. Council, this might be a good time, especially Mr. Sprague and Mr. Ryan, you've been longer time-wise with councils, with Mr. Hawker.
Well, I think it's, I'm glad I'm on the council right at the moment, because I was on the council that hired Mr. Hawker and worked with him for several years, and then I took a break and came back and found the city in better shape than when I left it the last time. And it's kind of fun to be here when he's retiring, and I'll be retiring. So, you know, I've appreciated the time and the effort that David has spent on the city and the things that he has brought forth that I know a lot of people don't understand or a lot of people don't agree with, but, you know, we, as a council, have acted on them because we have, like David, had a vision of the future of Lincoln City. And I think it's very appropriate, this is the fiftieth anniversary of the community, and fifty years ago, there was a group of people who sat here and came up with the concept of a much better city than five, six little cities, and had a vision of where it could go. And we, at this moment, on the fiftieth anniversary, cusp of the fiftieth anniversary celebration, are doing things that look to the future of this community and things that we feel that are going to make this city progress forward in an orderly and, I think, better condition than we've had before. We've acquired some property that's kind of controversial, but I think it will enhance Lincoln City so much, and it's through the efforts of David that we now have the Noel, which we badly wanted when I was on the council before. We now have that. We have some land that can be taken care of and sold off to developers who can develop it in a way that we envision that will make this city a much better city. When I was on the council before, we were losing water like crazy out of our water system. He's corrected it, or helped correct it. Our sewer system, or wastewater, I'm sorry, wastewater system has been improved, our water system has been improved. Gee, I could go on, but I won't.
And much of those the envy of the coast, quite frankly, of those infrastructure.
Yes, you know, I look at the things we've accomplished, and I worked for a number of years in Newport, and there are two cities very close proximity, and I look at what we've accomplished and I look at what they've accomplished, and what they've accomplished is, I don't know, I think we've accomplished a lot more that has done something to beautify this community and to beautify the coastal area. I'm very proud of this city, and I've been here since eighty-five, so I'm almost an old-timer. And David has been a good partner for this city for the past fifteen years, and I applaud you. Thank you.
Mr. Sprague, anything you can share with us on Mr. Hawker's?
Oh, you're going to the oldest now, I see, yeah. Well, I've been on the council, this is my fifth time, and during that time, I've served with three different city managers. I have to say that serving with Mr. Hawker has been the most enjoyable for me. I think he's done, as Wes has said, that he's done a lot for this community, and I'm sorry to see him leave, frankly. I'd like to have him stay on, but we tried to talk him into that, and he wouldn't do it. But I wish David well in the future and hope that you will stick around so we can still enjoy you.
Thank you. Gary, you too have been on many of councils, and long-term, any reflections?
Yeah, I came on this council not long after David was hired, and my initial memory of him was, and I'm not sure that any of you received the exact same reception, but we went to lunch together, and David had a busy day, and he took the time out of his day in order to do that. And he was also very careful not to allow me to pay for lunch. And he belongs to an association, a city manager association, that has rules and orders and ethics, and I've not seen him violate any of those things in as long as I've worked with him. You know, a lot of people don't really know what goes into the day-to-day operations of operating a city, specifically this city. It's long and it's narrow, and our elevation relative to being able to flow, you know, wastewater from one end of the city to the other is replete with pump stations. There's just a series of very specialized things going on all the time, and when you couple that with, Wes has touched on the improvements that have been made. When David got here, quite frankly, our water distribution system was in dire need of work, and I think that is one of my first memories of delving into that first, simultaneous somewhere along the way, the redoing the sewage treatment plant. And I would also like to take a moment and thank the taxpayers because of the way David presented the projects that all cost money. We were able to go before the taxpayers and explain to them things that needed to be done and try to accomplish it in an efficient, cost-effective manner. And to my knowledge, I don't think, we got turned down for one possible raise in tax, and I'll mention it so everybody can get a laugh, it was a gas tax. But I can't remember another bond that we brought before the public. The public's been very generous to the council, and I don't think they would have looked at the measures the way they did without David's backwork in analyzing and preparing the information so that we could take it before the taxpayer. It's very time-consuming, and it takes a lot of work, and it's the type of thing that after he's gone, probably most people, unless they've worked with him, are not going to remember his name, quite frankly. But they'll be enjoying the fruits of all these efforts for years and years and years to come. And David also, one of the reasons I like him is because he likes Saab's. And Saab makes a fine automobile. They took kind of a turn in a different direction a while ago, and I'm not sure they'll ever be back to their glory days the way they were, but it won't really matter to David because he's got at least a couple of them. And so he's, has been a good manager, and he's been a good associate, and I, like many of you up here, would like to thank him for his time.
Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one other thing. I'd like to have the staff, if they can, keep the courtroom open and make it available to everybody after the meeting so they can see that display of the legacy that follows David Hawker.
Mr. Maynard, any comments, or, you know, certainly we've run on for a long time.
That's good, that's a good thing.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Hawker. I feel he's a very hard-working, honest and fair man, and I've appreciated working with him, and I appreciate the tuition-free education I've received from him. Thank you.
Nice words. And gentlemen, ready?
Appreciate working with David, and even though we disagree on something, when we walk out the door, it ends there. He treats item by item and holds no animosity or no grudge toward anything, and I appreciate that very much.
I just want to say thank you, David. It's been a really great learning experience. To want to become a city manager, my hat is off to you. It's a thankless job. Somebody's got to do it. Thank you very much for doing it really good.
Thank you. Any rebuttals?
It's been a ride. It's, for the most part, been very enjoyable. It's a community that, for the most part, with a few exceptions, has been very civil in its discourse, and above everything else, when it really comes down to it. And you look at Washington and, on occasion, even Salem, and see the difficulties of government at those levels. Here, there's been generally, and there are exceptions, we've had civil discourse, and people respect each other's opinion, and that's been a real pleasure of mine. And to work with an exceptional staff, it's been a lot of fun. There's been some tough spots along the way, and there'll be a few in the future, but I believe that overall, I'm leaving this a better place, and I think that we're going to see better and better things for Lincoln City in the future, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Fifteen years in one locale as a city manager is pretty much out of the box, from what I understand in the industry.
My fourth city. I had six or seven years in each of three before here, and I anticipated, being here, six or seven years. It just became so ingrained that I just couldn't do anything else.
If you'd come forward, we've got a certificate for you with the fifteen years. Thank you, Mr. Hawker. Let's move on with the agenda. This is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items of a repeat or routine nature, considered under a single action. A counselor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. The consent agenda consists of, number two is minutes of the meeting, September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Number three is minutes of the meeting, September twenty-second, two thousand fourteen. Number four is award of contracts, Gunnar Creek Bank Stabilization Project, and number five, grant agreement, park planning. Is there any requests to remove an item? If not, then a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with an nay? Hearing none? Thank you. We have then Special Order of Business's proclamation, and council, I would appreciate reading this proclamation to you and to the public and then asking for a motion to approve. This is a proclamation, Lincoln City Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration, whereas the communities of Cutler City, Taft, Nelscott, D-Lake, and Ocean whereas the communities of Cutler City, Taft, Nelscott, D-Lake and Ocean Lake, Oregon, elected to incorporate as a single city on December 8th, 1964. And whereas the newly formed city was named Lincoln City. And whereas Lincoln City marks its 50th anniversary of the election on this December 8th, 2014. And whereas Lincoln City celebrates its citizens, business owners, volunteers, elected officials and staff who strive to preserve, enhance and protect the community of today. And whereas Lincoln City citizens foresee a city growing in its appreciation for the natural environment that includes its fresh air, ocean beaches, vast open spaces and parks. And whereas the city of Lincoln City is proud to be the vacation destination choice for many thousands of visitors each year. And whereas Lincoln City is home to many generous businesses, both large and small, that contribute energy, economic support and employment to its citizens and visitors. And whereas Lincoln City is home to a large number of active, generous and involved citizens. And whereas Lincoln City looks to 2015 as a year of community-wide celebration to honor our past, celebrate our present and imagine our future. Now therefore, I Dick Anderson, Mayor of City of Lincoln City, Oregon, to hereby proclaim this election anniversary date as the official kickoff to a year-long 50th anniversary celebration in Lincoln City, dated this eighth day of December, 2014.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we adopt the proclamation.
A second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you very much. You have your proclamation. We then have a next item, which is appointment to the Planning Commission. We've had an empty seat on the Planning Commissioner. Sean Kidd vacated, moved away. Applicant, both councillor Norikas and I interviewed, is Steve Griffiths. And you've seen in the packet his application. He's certainly been involved in the city. He's been chairman of the parks and the board, open space. The BRD consensus group has been involved in those kind of things. Been an active individual. And I believe, speaking for myself, I certainly recommend his approval to the Planning Commission. Mr. Norikas?
I would, I feel the same way, Mr. Mayor.
And with that, perhaps you could make the motion to approve his, council to approve his appointment?
I move that we approve Steve Griffith for the Planning Commission opening.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. We have a contract renewal for audit services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are just finishing up our financial audit for fiscal year 2013-14. This is the fifth year that our audit has been done by Talbot, Corbola and Warwick, who we refer to as TKW. And it is also the final year that's covered, or that's provided for in our current contract. I continue to be very pleased with the professionalism and knowledge that the staff bring to the audit that they do for us. And I would like to request a three-year renewal for audit services with TKW. And this is not something I say libly. They are very thorough. They have three to four people on-site for a total of three weeks. And they look an awful lot of places. Some days, you feel like you've kind of been through the wringer. And they have a knack of finding things that aren't quite the way that they should be and that can sometimes be frustrating. But it is also, I think, a mark of a good audit that you're obtaining some information on maybe some things you weren't aware of, where you could be doing better. We did things a little bit different process-wise this year. Always before, the city's auditors have drafted and put together the financial statement, which for the city is 100 and some pages. This is a bit of a process because in the financial statements, what numbers show on a particular report depend on what level it is. And different accounting rules can apply to different pages. So it's not just kind of like pulling numbers out of your system. You have to pull out numbers out of your system and then you have to adjust them for a different accounting method here and then adjust them again for a different accounting method. So that's always been done by the city's auditors. This year, I offered to do a portion of the statements, which were the budget to actual comparisons, which is a good part of the statements because they were pulled mostly from our system and didn't require a lot of manipulation. They had someone come on-site and work on the rest of the piece of the financial statements and I kind of got involved in that. And I really appreciated having a lot more involvement in putting the statements together because I feel a lot more ownership of them. I know a lot more about what exactly, what exactly the changes are from one page to the other page. And I also, having been pretty much through this once, feel comfortable that we can do this internally next year. And so this proposal that is included in your packet assumes that the city will draft the financial statements during the next three years. And that has resulted, normally you see a cost increases from year to year, but the proposal for next year's audit would actually be a 6% decrease because of the city doing a drafting of the financial statements. So that would be for fiscal year 14-15. And then fiscal year 15-16 would be an estimated 4% increase. And then 16-17, an estimated 4% increase. Are there any questions?
I'd like to add just briefly to that. When they were hired, I think we had proposals from four audit companies. And we recommended, Debbie and I both recommended, the company that we felt was the most rigorous. They happened to be the most expensive, but they were the most thorough and the only company that said that they would not do the audit unless they had direct access to the city council, which is the only firm that said that. So you're getting the most thorough audit that I believe we can get short of really specialized services. But as far as a regular audit is concerned, I don't think you can get a more thorough audit than what we're getting. And yeah, they do put us through the wringer, but it keeps us on our toes and I think that's good business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Also, I would say that having lived through a number of audits over the years, that I really appreciate TKW's report of the audit to the council. I mean, they make it understandable, which is not easy to do for laypeople to understand. So I just really do appreciate that.
Debbie, and I noticed in your background, you reminded us that it's been five years. So there was some kind of decision five years ago to make a change. Is there a norm, a standard that you looked at going forward? You're now a three-year extensions into eight years. When one changes audit firms?
I don't know if there's a recommended standard. We had, our prior auditor, we had had for many, 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 many years. I don't even know how long. There is a benefit to changing firms in that you get different processes, different ways of looking at things. But it is more costly too because the firm really has to learn how you work and understand your business. So I don't feel we're at the point where we should start looking yet. If I had to say, I might, don't hold me to it, but I don't know, maybe another eight, nine years.
That's right. I was wondering if it's a 10 to 15-year cycle. Okay. All right. Other questions on the renewal?
Yeah, I see in your memo, Ms. Mamonie, that for the first time ever, the financial department has participated in the actual creation, i.e. drafting of the fiscal year 13-14 audited financial statements. And that's helped us in terms of saving money for the city and reduced costs from TKW?
Yes, I had actually not done that before. The last city I was with, the auditors drafted the statements as well. And because of the accounting rules, I was not really sure whether it's something I wanted to take on. But having been through the, kind of been involved in it this year, it gave me the confidence that, yeah, we can do this. And that, taking on that work has resulted in that 6% decrease for next year.
I appreciate you taking that on. Thank you.
Thank you. It was fun, actually. I enjoyed it.
I'm sorry.
You laughing at me? It's much better than reading ordinances.
Any other questions or comments? If none, entertain a motion?
I would move, Ms. Mayor, that we approve a three-year renewal for financial audit services with TKW, or the attached proposal.
All right. And since it's dollars, could we?
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the second. Yep. We have a motion with a second to approve. Contract Services, roll call please.
Norikas?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Hagleton?
Yes.
And Ellingson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have, next item is a donation.
Mayor and council, I would like to show a couple photographs, if I can get this up quickly. There are items that you have in your packet. This is an offer of cash for the placement of a bench in honor of the donor's parents who loved the Oregon coast. It's from Keith and Michelle Nelson. And if I can, I'll share this with them. We do not have an established policy and procedures for accepting donations. We, this is something that we have been working on at the park board level and they have made a recommendation on a procedure. Later on this evening, the city attorney is going to be leading you through some proposals for park regulations and it includes something about policies for accepting donations. So, you know, we've been a little bit slow to respond to these people's requests and I apologize for that. But I think it's a very generous request for a donor to donate. And we have what I think will be a very attractive bench and a nice place to put it. So maybe I can show you this here. Okay, let's see. Well, maybe I'll just have to continue without it. I guess I'll, I will have to, I'll just have to say that they are offering $3,000. We have a bench like the ones that were put at the Southwest 35th Street Beach Access. And it's a concrete bench. I do have, and I don't know whether you got this in your packet, but I do have an estimate from the manufacturer who prices the bench at $660. And shipping is $305. They look very attractive, I think, and the park board likes them at the Southwest 35th Street Access. And they seem to be something that is going to hold up well over the years. Because it only costs $1,000, we will have money left over from the donation to put in a foundation, to place the bench, and, which will take some equipment and some time from the Public Works Department. And there is an inset where a plaque can be. And so we will offer them the option of providing that plaque. They did mention that they would like to have a plaque. The park board recommended, and I think it's probably a good idea, to ask them to order the plaque so that it reflects what they want to say, but it's to the city specifications. We also are suggesting that the council direct the staff to prepare a written agreement for accepting the donation and specifying exactly what the city will do and where the bench will be placed and how the bench will be maintained. So I think that's, unless you have questions?
Location?
The location is on Southwest Beach. It is at a subdivision, small subdivision there called The Point. It was approved a few years ago and the plaque was recorded, dedicating a small area for a viewpoint to the city. And now we have a couple parking spaces. One is an ADA, accessible space. And then a second space, they are paved. And this would sit right beside that parking area.
Great.
It overlooks Celeste Bay, so it's a fabulous view.
Right. Other questions, any council?
You know, that view, not long after I first moved here, there was a house on a portion of that property, which no longer exists. And I always liked to go down there. The fellows are very generous because you can see the bay and the Salishan Spit and the ocean pretty much unobstructed, 180-degree view of the ocean. If there's a good place for a bench, that's a good place.
Other comments from council? But certainly a nice donation from, were they citizens, residents of Lincoln City or the, in memory of some?
They said that they are from Eastern Washington, I believe, and they really love the Oregon coast and their parents really love the Oregon coast. So they think this is a fitting memorial.
Yeah, very nice. Mr. Norikas?
Please thank the Nelsens for their generous donation on behalf of the council.
I certainly will.
No further questions. Did entertain a motion?
I would move that council accepts the donation and directs staff to prepare an agreement with the Nelsens, clarifying the donation and the city's obligation to place and maintain that bench.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you.
Mayor, I have one question.
Certainly.
If I remember correctly, you said that the city does not have a policy on donations? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then we should come up with, that would be something that the future council should kind of come up with if...
Actually, you will be here shortly. Item 18 is your opportunity to weigh right in there.
Okay, so I'll shut up.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure that what the city attorney is doing this evening covers that, the policies and procedures that the park board has outlined. If not, we will bring that back another evening and you can see what they've proposed.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have then now the actual submission of our audit financial statements, the 2013-2014 audited financial statements.
Mayor and council, it's my pleasure to introduce Rob Moody. He's a partner with the company that's been doing our audits for the last five years, TKW. And as referenced earlier, part of the audit process is to communicate with council and they usually do that at the submission of the audit, so.
Thank you, Debbie. Mayor and members of council, thank you again for your time this evening. I appreciate being able to be here in front of you tonight. A quick point of clarification. We normally have the final bound signed audited statements for you. By the time I give this presentation, after I'd left the office to actually come over here this afternoon, we received the final attorney letter that by our standards, we can't release until we have all of those attorney letters in place. And it came today, so we'll be processing those tomorrow and get them to you on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you.
Couple things. We've provided you a letter... Couple things, we've provided you a letter, or we will provide you a letter, that basically outlines, what we call the SAS 114 letter, it's one I've discussed with you every year that we've been here. It outlines the responsibilities of you and the city, it outlines our responsibilities as the auditors. If there were any issues that would have come up during the audit, you would have heard about them before this. The letter basically says that there were none. It talks about a statement that was implemented by the city this year, GASB standard 65, and you'll see the remnants of that when I discuss the financial statements with you in just a moment. It also talks about a couple of statements that will be implemented by the city next year. And we've talked about the pension standards that have been coming for the last couple of years. Well, guess what? Next year, it's here. So, there will be a significant, I don't know, impact's not really the right word. It'll be significant, when you look at the statements next year, you'll definitely be able to see where that statement has been implemented. The crux of that matter is, the unfunded actuarial liability that the city and all cities basically have with PERS will be presented on the face of the financial statements for the first time. It's not an Oregon thing, it's a national thing, but it'll be there, it will have an impact on your equity, from a reporting standpoint. Again, operationally, there's no impact at all. So, you know, your day-to-day operations and your budgetary statements won't be impacted by it. And we'll talk at length with your staff as they go through their implementation and do the reporting. The reporting piece of implementing GASB 68 is not really that difficult. The information will be provided by PERS, and working with their actuaries. The auditing piece of that is going to be, that's a little bit of a different story. We're not quite sure how to approach that yet, because the guidance is still coming out. And we're still attending trainings on those, and we're still working with PERS and their auditors to try and figure out where we're going to get that information. So, that's kind of a glimpse ahead at what's coming next year. What I'd like to do is talk to you a little bit about this other letter that I know you have in draft, and then I'll jump into the financial statements. When we do an audit, we look at the city's internal controls over financial reporting, and we're required to bring to your attention anything that we think rises to a level that merits your attention. So, that's what we're doing with this letter. I'm not going to read it to you, you can, I'm sure you've read it, but there was a couple of issues that came up with this year's audit. They've been addressed in the financial statements themselves. What they are is, well, quickly or briefly what the two issues are, one has to do with the reporting of the property that was purchased, that currently a portion of it will be subdivided, and a portion of it is for the city's use. When that property was purchased, it was all recorded as capital assets. What we came to understand subsequent to that, is that a portion of that property will be, I guess subsequently, sold off and developed. As such, the accounting rules and standards define that as assets held for sale, and there's some specific reporting rules around that. So, what we've worked with Debbie and her staff to do, is have that presented correctly in the financial statements this year. It's a landscaping issue on the entity-wide statements, in that it was moved from capital assets to this other asset category, assets held for sale. Those special rules around this, because it's sort of a unique reporting, require assets held for sale be reported at the fund level also. So, you'll see that in the general fund, when we get to the financial statements themselves, and I'll point that out to you. It resulted in a restatement of the financial statements. The second item has to do with an inter-fund loan between the Unbonded Assessments Fund and the Water Fund. This was, this happened a few years ago. It's pretty common. We see these kinds of things go through as transfers all the time, because at a budgetary level, that's what it is. It's a transfer from one fund to another. But the essence of it is, it's a loan between those two funds, and there's some specific accounting and reporting requirements around inter-fund loans. We've corrected that, or Debbie's staff has corrected that in the financial statements this year, so we recognize that. The technicality of all of this, is that they were, in effect, technical errors in the financial statements before, they've been corrected. But because there was an error, there's, the logic behind that is that the internal controls allowed that error to occur, so there must have been a weakness, right? That's kind of the logic we go through. So, we bring that to your attention here. What I want to stress is that in the current financial statements, things are presented and disclosed correctly, okay? So, the issues have been resolved.
Okay.
Any questions about that letter? I know Debbie has prepared, I'm sorry, I keep calling you just Debbie, I should probably be more formal than that, but your finance director has prepared a response to those issues.
Miss Debbie.
Miss Debbie.
One other comment I'd like to add to that, is that the financial reports that we use primarily here at the city, or largely here at the city, are the budget reports, and those were accurate. These transactions do not go on a budget, so as far as the reports you've been looking at, there's not been any changes.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Okay, so what then you have before you is the draft financial statements for the city and the urban renewal agency. Again, GASB 65 statement, Statement 65 was implemented this year, and what that did is, in effect, it took items that were previously reported as assets and liabilities, and re-landscape them a little bit, because they don't meet the technical definition of an asset or a liability. In effect, the only impact on your financial statements is in the fund statements. We used to see this thing called deferred revenue, and that was the piece of the receivable for property taxes and assessments and some other things, that extends out into subsequent years. So, it's not available to pay bills in the current year, so we called it deferred revenue. Well, the GASB has decided that deferred revenue isn't really a liability, it's what we call a deferred inflow of resources. I don't know. I don't make this stuff up, I just make sure you report it correctly. So, that's where it is now, and I'll show you that when we get into the statements. Okay. Let me just point out a handful of things to you here in summary. First of all, again, Debbie did a great job of explaining that she was deeply involved in the financial statements this year. She did a nice job. These are your financial statements, they're not mine, they're not TKW's. We simply have a responsibility to give you an opinion on whether or not they're fairly stated in all material respects, and we've done that. We've provided you what we call an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion on those financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance I can give you. That opinion, the one I sign, is the only piece of this that's mine. Everything else is yours, and I think you can be very proud of your staff in terms of putting this together. It's not a simple task. So, I don't know if you guys have this in front of you, yes? If you want to take a quick look, or follow along at home? The Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is the very first few pages, beginning on page four, you've heard me say before, and I'll reiterate, that this is a really nice summary of the financial statements, written in non-financial language, that should help you see what happened at the city during the fiscal year-end, on June 30th, 2014. There's some nice comparisons to 2013, and an explanation of how you got from one to the other. So, I'd encourage you to spend a few minutes with that information. On page 12, is the Statement of Net Position. I'll call your attention to just a couple of lines there. There's a line up, just about four lines down under the heading of Assets, that says Internal Balances. That's the balance on the loan currently between the Unbonded Assessments and the Water Fund. So, that gets shown that way, just simply because it crosses over between governmental activities and business-type activities. The Assets Held For Sale, you'll see, is about three lines down from that. And that's a new line that you haven't seen on your financial statements previously. And again, it was included in the Capital Assets line, it's just been moved up. On the next page, you'll see a Prior Period Adjustment Amount, down near the bottom of that schedule, and that is the Prior Period Adjustment that relates to that inter-fund loan. That was the balance of the loan at the beginning of the year. Over on page 14, again, this is the Governmental Funds Balance Sheet. Again, you see that Assets Held For Sale, and right there in the middle of it is, you'll see that Deferred Inflow Of Resources For Unavailable Revenue. That's the new mystic term for what we used to call deferred revenue. That's really all I'm going to do in terms of pointing out numbers to you. There is a couple of footnotes, as you move back through, and I won't call them out specifically, but there's a footnote that describes the deferred inflows and outflows of resources in concept, in the footnotes, to help you understand kind of what the city's doing there. And there's also a footnote near the back of the notes, that explains that Prior Period Adjustment, or that restatement. It's kind of a quick and dirty jaunt through the financial statements. I anticipate that there may be some questions, because you guys are always really good at kind of making sure that I've done my job. So, I would be happy to entertain those questions at this point.
Certainly, after five years of, you know, we're starting to get used to, and as Counselor Sprague indicated, it's very easy to read, and so appreciate the sensitivity, I know, to us and the assistants. I actually don't have any questions. I think it's good to hear your summaries, because you touched on the things that did pop up. Other council questions?
I have a question.
Certainly.
This is just, because I've wondered a couple of times over the years, when either someone has asked me how much our budget is, or they've told me how much our budget is, of how a, without having their eyes glaze over, you know, and you only have 30 seconds to answer the question, would it be fair to say that it, our budget is normally less unusual items, like if bond measure money comes in, or some other thing that is not normal, that does not happen normally year after year? I mean, would it be fair to say that that's what the budget amount is? Or should you say it depends on what year you're asking the question?
Well, yes. Actually, the issue is...
No, I mean, I've had people say, you have a $40 million budget, and I keep hearing that, you got a $40 million budget.
Well, there's really, I mean, there's a couple of things to that, or a couple of pieces to that. There's typically an operating budget, which is your general fund, and those operating funds, you know, your road fund, and some of those kind of, what you would think of as your major funds, and your water fund, and your wastewater fund, et cetera. If you add all those up, we typically think about those as the operating budget of the city. Then there's a capital piece to budgeting, and you have some capital projects, funds, that set out, you know, the projects that you expect to accomplish during the year, and that's a different number. If you want to think about the overall budget of the city, slam those two together, but I don't, you know, I'd have to actually look and see what the numbers are, but I typically try and think about things in terms of an operations and capital, because the capital can fluctuate wildly, year to year. Your operations budget is typically fairly straightforward, maybe with a cost inflation factor.
And we do, actually, I believe, comparatively speaking, we have, we put a lot of money into capital over the last few years, and so I think the capital portion of our budget for our size is significant.
Well, it is, but I, anyway, I don't want to take any more of your time, I just, that would help me, we can say there's an operating part of the budget?
Yeah.
And that's normally pretty...
Steady.
Steady.
Yeah.
And then sometimes there are capital improvement projects taking place, so you have to weed that out, because I, I mean, usually it's either asked to me, or told to me, in a, almost a condescending way, like, you're, you've just spent too much money, you know, so.
That might be something during the budget process, we could highlight a little more, showing what is the operation portion versus the capital portions, compared to history, maybe.
It would be interesting, if it wouldn't take a lot of time.
Yeah, we'd do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, we can expect some packages in the mail, is what you're telling us?
Yes, sir.
Nicely wrapped, and, you know...
Maybe even a bow.
Christmas present?
Might be able to get a bow on it.
Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that there are any changes to the numbers, since the draft that we sent you. There's some wordsmithing corrections, but nothing significant.
That's a true statement.
And while I've got you, again, for the public, is, rather than trying to dig through the council packet, is it appropriate, one, to put the audit on the website, and is there a place for the public to view perhaps the finished product would be more appropriate?
Yeah, we do put several years of our audited statements on the website. We will get the one for 1314 up this week. You just go to the city's website, and under Departments, click on the Finance Department, and you'll see a link that goes to our audited statements.
Great, great. Any action council needs? Do we accept the audit? So, we'd need a motion to accept the 2013...
Actually, you might want to wait till you have the final...
Wait, we get the finished product?
You can do that on a consent agenda in a following meeting, or something, if you'd like. I guess one thing I'd like to add is, I want to thank you for the extension of our contract with the city. We appreciate working with the city. We've formed a really nice working relationship, not only with you and with your staff, but with a local firm here in town, who we actually contract for one of their people to help us out with the engagement, and it's turned into a really nice relationship, and we feel like we're helping you keep some of your audit fees local as well. And they, we anticipate them continuing to work with us throughout the contract. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of our firm and theirs.
Thank you.
Well, I know when I visited with some of your staff, while they were here, they, I know they were housed in one of our vacation rentals, and were planning a big dinner, and, you know, I'm sure it was pizza coming in. So, it's nice to have...
They work long hours.
Yes, it's nice to have the dollars in the community, and I appreciate you thinking of that.
Absolutely.
And you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thanks for traveling. We do sincerely appreciate you even coming physically and making that presentation every year.
That's all right, we appreciate it too.
Nope.
Good night, now.
All right, thanks. All right, we have, next on our agenda is a discussion item, this is a city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a discussion, at this point, of our community center rates. You know that we're heavily subsidized for everybody that uses the community center, and we're trying over time to reduce that subsidy, it's a struggle. One of the things that can help us is to adjust our rates periodically, and we have gone, until a few years ago, we had gone quite a while without a rate adjustment. We're very low compared to other similar public facilities. There's always going to be a decision of how much we should raise them, and Gail has done a nice memo, and we've asked you to look at an adjustment on an average basis of 5% to 10%. This is a discussion only because we need to come back with an advertisement for the public, so they can comment on it, and a resolution, a rate resolution at the next meeting, but we need some guidance. Gail, do you want to kind of cover it briefly?
Sure. As, good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Hawker mentioned, it had been some time since the construction of the new fitness facility, until we raised rates, which was... facility until we raised rates, which was in 2012. And we raised them again in 2013, then we took a little hiatus. You know, the economy was pretty slow around here. We weren't ready to quite make our customers jump through that hoop again. But we're lagging as other facilities come on board, as their rates have gone up, ours have not, and so it's time to play catch-up again. We've done what we can within our staff and our facility to, you know, maintain our costs. We're down about two FTEs from a few years ago, so we've done that. The new boiler, I ran some figures this week, and it has saved our natural gas bill about 18 percent year over year, so we're seeing some nice savings from that. But at the same time, you know, when you run a business, everything else is going up, your overhead is going up. And, you know, in particular, we want to stay somewhat equal to other facilities and, you know, ultimately reduce our reliance on the general fund subsidy. I met with the Parks Board a couple of weeks ago, and they recommended a 10 percent increase across the board rates. And so in your council packet, you'll notice I've figured both a 5 percent and a 10 percent, and then we take an average of that increase.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I see that the comparisons between Lincoln City and, say, Newport and Seaside, and even Bend for that matter, but in comparing their rates, are we also comparing the facilities that they are offering to the public?
Yes. I on purpose went to areas that had both a fitness and an aquatic facility together like we do, so it was more apples to apples.
Well, it sure shows that we are definitely low. I'm being one of those adults looking at an annual fee. We're less than $200, and Newport's 421, Seaside's 250, and Astoria's 189, but Bend was way up there, as I remember. But in Woodburn, holy cow, they're 436. So we are low, and I know we're subsidizing heavily, and I think that we need to consider a rate increase. My wife will hate me for that, but I think we do.
About 70 percent of our customers are local residents, and 30 percent are from, out of the area, and that's across the board, both for drop-ins and for memberships. And this proposal does continue the resident discount, you know, for those who live here. And it's a pretty significant discount, anywhere from 20 to 30 percent, depending on which package that you buy.
And according to your memo, that's 70 percent of the community center members and drop-in customers?
Yes, yes.
Gail, let me compliment you on the data. It's a nice package to read, and you've got, I like the history because that's one of the things we've been concerned about as we've talked about raising and have made smaller jumps, the impact on the memberships and renewals. And it's nicer to see more years because you can see the ebb and flow, and someone may not renew, but they then show up as a new sale in another year or so.
Exactly.
And it's much more reflective. Also, the data that you've provided of comparisons has been real helpful in a good variety of communities, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Yes, I, I too. It wasn't that many years ago that data wasn't broken out, at least, you know, in an easy-to-access way. But a couple of the figures, and I do it with a smile on my face, it just leaves me scratching my head a little bit. You know, if you look at the drop-ins, like from 2011 to 2012, they go up 6,000. There's 6,000 more drop-ins, and then for some reason it goes back down in 13 and up a little bit in 14. And so I'm sure there's a reason, maybe the rock wall was in extra good form at that time or something.
It could be, and a lot depends on the weather as well, which we saw this summer. We saw, you know, a big decrease in our drop-ins. When it's 70 degrees on the beach, people don't want to come inside. So that has an effect on that. And we have great software. A couple of years ago, you know, thanks to the support of the council, we were able to purchase some really updated recreation-based software, and that helps us to track these numbers much more closely.
The thing that tracks well, and for me says that you are doing the right thing, I hope we are too, like new sales in 2011's 893, and you haven't completed the 2014 final number yet, but in 2013 it was 2088, you know, so, you know, that's a nice, you know, that's steady.
It's been showing a steady increase, yes.
You're doing something right. Otherwise, that number would be going the other direction.
And I honestly don't know what other information you'd need or we would need. And I'm glad you've run it by the Park Board, keeping them involved. We certainly need their support.
Of course, yeah.
And awareness, because they're on-site and recognizing, because I think from, you've shared with us before comments from, written comments from walk-ins or visitors about the quality, so they know they're getting a great deal. We have more trouble with our own locals who are so used to Santa Claus that it's a little harder to pay up. But I would ask you, and even your recommendation and stuff is there, because you're not asking to go full bore by any means, get us up to par, because as we all know, the median income here of our citizens is much below a lot of these communities that we're comparing to. So, you know, I'd like to kind of keep that in mind and keep ratcheting up. And I think the philosophy has been, you know, a little more often is better than, you know, a huge jump at one time. So I would encourage you to keep bringing that kind of proposal back to councils and go. Any other questions, or is there really no action at this point?
Well, we need to bring you a resolution.
So I think there's certainly the consensus that what I'm hearing from council and recognition that it's time to move up.
We've given you numbers for both 5 percent and 10 percent increase, and Park Board recommended a 10 percent increase. I don't have a particular recommendation on this.
I like the 10 percent. I mean, well, okay, I don't like the 10 percent. I think that 10 percent is appropriate.
And that's an average, because we've, it's not across the board.
Right, yeah.
Actually, the Park Board said up to 10 percent.
Oh, okay.
So I was there.
I think 10 percent is fair.
But we do have to take public comment, so you won't do this until we...
So that's, all that'll do is put it in the resolution.
Good.
And I think we're talking about March 1st implementation date. And the other issue I want to bring up, and this is kind of difficult to explain, but the never-ending controversy that they get, that our people at the front counter get, is I'm a property owner, why don't I get the resident discount? And there's really three, the subsidy that we all enjoy there, and it's a heavy subsidy, it comes from several sources. It does come somewhat from property tax, it comes from state shared revenue, and it comes a big chunk from the transient room tax. So when we look at who's paying the bill, we know that the visitors are paying the bill because there's a big chunk that goes into the community center from the transient room tax, because it is a park. It's designated as a park, and we get a big amount in our parks from the TRT. In fact, that's about all we get for parks is TRT. The visitors pay almost all of that. The state shared revenue that we get is based on population. That's part of the subsidy. So the residents get credit for that. The property owners who are non-residents don't. And the residents, we feel, are more, contribute year-round to our economy. And so the residents get a slightly better rate than the property owners who are non-residents. And that's hard for property owners to understand, but they, as a group, contribute less towards the subsidy. So it's done out of an interest of fairness and a recognition of our residents, should have some minor, minor, and is very minor difference, a little bit better subsidy than the property owners. Some property owners are heavily invested and some aren't. And anyway, council will always hear this debate, and I recommend continuing the difference. I know the community center staff would prefer a single rate. It's easier to explain, and you don't have to, you don't have to explain. Except then maybe we have to explain to our residents why the property owner who is not year-round contributor to the economy gets the same rate. So I guess it depends on who we're going to explain to. But everybody gets a solid subsidy.
Right.
Everybody.
Yes, and I think that's the point we have to continue to make and not be bashful about, is we know it's a great deal. One, the quality of the center, but also the cost of the center to whomever's using it, and we need to, you know, not be embarrassed by that by any means.
Well, it's still, Mr. Mayor? It's still, let me see, in some, it costs more to operate the center than we take in in revenue.
Yeah, a lot.
By double, by...
Yeah, the operation, yeah.
By operation.
Sure.
I mean, that, to me, is where if somebody is asking a question, what you need to say is, this is a bargain to the tune of, you know, less than half price if we were collecting...
Well, we try to do that, and...
But I mean, it makes a difference, you know.
But I think between this council, future councils, and, you know, budget committees, you know, these sharing and educating all that folks, there's more people on the street that know the answer and need to share that answer when you hear somebody grumbling about it.
Our staff has been trained also, you know, with the help of Mr. Hawker, that, you know, they're very proactive in, you know, putting a positive spin, and this is a great, you know, bargain, and the city is, you know, really doing everyone, you know, a great favor by having this great facility here.
Thank you, Gail.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, it says contract approval, City Manager. We are hopeful that we'll have my replacement and a contract for that, but we're not going to have it tonight. So hopefully at the next meeting, we will have something to present to you. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, at the next meeting, and this will be advertised, we're going to ask the council to approve an exchange of property between the city and the Coast Vineyard Church for the operation of a food pantry that they've been generously doing for, I think, about six years. And I don't believe, I could be wrong on this, but I don't believe it's just their own membership that contributes their time and considerable efforts to that. It's, I think, other volunteers in the community. I'm going to put a memo in the next council meeting and explain a little bit about, more about what this land exchange will be, and also the importance of the food pantry to this community, and it's astounding how much food goes through there and how many residents of this community are served, and of the area. It's not just Lincoln City. Like so many things, we serve the north part of Lincoln County, and so does the food pantry. Anyway, that'll be on the next meeting and for your consideration. And that's all I had.
And Mr. Appicello, do you have anything other than the...
A couple ordinances later on, I don't have anything. There was a correction on one of the resolutions that, I don't know, Kathy, if you change the title. Okay. It was just it referred to primary, and it was general election. So in the title, it was wrong, but that's been corrected.
Okay. Well, let's move to that, then we have resolutions in front of us. Resolution number 2014-29, a resolution authorizing and directing budget, transfers for the City of Lincoln City, Oregon in the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget. You see that in front of you?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we adopt resolution 2014-29.
And there's a second, Mr. Ryan. We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have resolution 2014-30, a resolution declaring the official results of the canvas of votes of the general election held in the City of Lincoln City, Oregon on November 4th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 2014-30.
Sir, a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
And Norikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have ordinances. Ordinance, we have ordinance number 2014-22, and this is a second reading?
So I'm going to have to read some things. But before I get into the reading, I just want to point out a couple of things that came up during the public comment. So we've had public comment again, but the record's closed and the hearings closed. So the public comment isn't in the official land use record, but there was some statements made that indicate that there's still some misunderstanding about what we've done. So first thing I would do is I would direct interested parties to the findings which are on the city website. Right now, they are adopted as part of ordinance 2014-21, posted on the city's website. Findings for 2014-22 are exactly the same as the findings for ordinance 2014-21. They're incorporated by reference in this ordinance. And I'd point you to page 12 where we have a bit of a summary. I'm going to, if with your indulgence, I'm going to read a little bit of the summary, and then I'm going to speak in English and explain what it says, just because today's appearance by some people at the podium still indicates that we have some misunderstanding out there. So 2014-22 creates an additional nondiscretionary expedited review process for VRDs in commercial zones and VRDs in residential zones, and it just went away. In residential zones, when the applicant elects to limit VRD use in the residential zone to 30 nights per year. This is an optional process which permits a new applicant to bypass the land use process. This is possible because for purposes of this alternative route to a license, the city council has established a nondiscretionary numeric limit to implement the discretionary accessory use limitation. Now, what that means in English is that you have two options if you are, you want to have a new VRD. The first option, described here as the new option, is you just go directly to a license, and you agree as part of that expedited process that you're going to rent no more than 30 nights a year. That's added to the existing ordinance. So the existing, I'm reading again from the findings, the existing land use process for approval of accessory use VRDs remains unchanged. The operative discretionary limiting terms for VRDs in residential zones, accessory use, and incidental and subordinate to the main use are not modified by this ordinance. The council elected to avoid threatened Measure 49 claims by leaving the existing limiting language unaltered. Laws in existence for more than five years are exempt from Measure 49 claims. Accessory use limitation dating back to 1989 has not been altered in over five years. While there was a request to repeal the accessory use... While there was a request to repeal the accessory use limitation, the council emphasized it is not repealing or changing the law by adding language directing staff to make findings and enforce the existing language of the code. Essentially, you have two options. One, you just want to go right to a license. You agree to 30 days, you go right to a license. Two, you have the existing process that's there now, which means you submit a land use application and you submit evidence that you will comply with the criteria in the code in, this is in 1780-050, including B 1 through 8. B 2 happens to be the accessory use limitation. So you can come in and you can apply for accessory use VRD in the land use process and you can argue that accessory use means 180 days, just less than half. You can argue that, just like Costco argued that in the Leonetti Furniture case in Beaverton years ago. And you can argue that. And if you don't win, you can file an appeal, just like they did in that case. So the existing land use process is still there. You can come in and you can use it, or you can take the new added process. Now, this ordinance, the last time we talked about it, you asked me to work with staff on implementation measure, and so we've proposed delaying the effective date of this ordinance by 30 days. Or, I'm sorry, by six months, by, it'll be effective July 1. That's entirely up to you. I don't particularly see a reason to delay the implementation of the expedited process, but that's one of the things that will be delayed by the delayed effective date. So what else does ordinance 2014-22 do? Ordinance 2014 also includes an optional settlement of disputed compliance issues with existing owners in residential zones. So we're switching gears now. Before, I was talking about new VRDs. Now I'm talking about existing VRDs. This ordinance includes an optional settlement of disputed compliance issues with existing owners. What the ordinance does, in a sense, is tie my hands. It says, Mr. Attorney, it doesn't matter what you believe accessory use is, the council is saying to you, you have to settle a case for 180 days. So that's what the administrative allowance is. Council providing direction to have uniform treatment of existing VRDs. You've decided, I'm required to settle disputed accessory use cases for 180 days. And it's not even telling me to settle. They have essentially a safe harbor. They can say, I'd just like to use that administrative allowance. I don't want to get into an argument. I want to do it now. So you're giving them the option. So that's the second thing that's in this ordinance. First thing's in this ordinance is an expedited process in addition to the existing process. Second thing that's in here is an administrative allowance. It's a settlement, ties my hands and says, it doesn't matter if I wanted to go forward with enforcement action because I believe that this particular VRD owner was violating the accessory use limitation, you have determined that I can't if they want to take this settlement. So again, this is delayed by six months by the delay in the effective date. I don't think it needs to be delayed. The good news is, at the last meeting, you also said, separate the settlement, the administrative allowance, from the license. So I did. I said, in this ordinance and the language I'm going to read, I said, you can take the settlement at any time by way of a compliance agreement. Well, a compliance agreement isn't new. It's actually something we do now and I have the authority to enter into compliance agreements now. So you can get a settlement now because we can enter into compliance agreements. It has nothing to do with this ordinance. But again, the delay in the effective date may, people might think, well, wait, I want that available now. So it's something to consider. I don't think you need to delay the effective date of an available settlement. But if you want to, that's the way the language is written right now. If you want me to change it, tell me and I'll change it. The third thing that ordinance 2014-22 does is allows property owners who don't want to settle to argue about it. And it says that they may file for a quasi judicial nonconforming use or vested rights determination. Now, and that's if they believe that they can prove that they're entitled to more than 180 days. Now, this may need to be delayed. And again, the proposed language would delay this until July 1 because you're going through the VR rezoning process. So a property owner could, event, could say, you know, I want to argue about it, but I'd like to see what happens with the VR rezoning. So why waste the time and resources arguing about, I have vested rights or whatever under this provision before we get through the VR process? So it makes sense to delay this provision for six months so that we don't have people arguing unnecessarily because, you know, you want to come in and argue you're entitled to 365 days a year or you're entitled to 300 days a year. And that's kind of a unnecessary argument because you're pretty much right in the box where they're thinking about rezoning in a VR. So I understand this, again, will be delayed six months with the existing language. And the rest of what's in 22 is just some cleanup language. So I want to emphasize that the findings for 2014-22 are the findings for ordinance 2014-21, didn't even change the date. They are incorporated by reference in this ordinance. They're posted on the city's website. I'm going to read some language changes, most of which are highlighted in yellow. Chester found a couple other mistakes that I had made. So I'm going to have to read those and then I'm going to have to read the title. And then if, but if you want a different direction on the effective date, let me do all the readings first. And if you want me to mess around with the effective date stuff and make some of this effective and some of it not, you might have to postpone this to the next meeting, just so I can mess around with that language. But I'm just letting you know, right now, it's written, the entire thing is delayed till July 1 effective date. And the matching ordinance, the, sorry, the license ordinance is also delayed. Anybody have any questions before I start reading?
Read away.
On page one of ordinance 2014-22, the title on line five, you'll note that I made a slight change, that it says, adding clarifying language directing compliance with existing accessory use limitation, striking the word requiring. The only reason I did that is because the actual text of the ordinance later on says directing. So I made it match. I'm not, I'm going to read the whole title later with that correction, but I just wanted you to be alerted to that. Also, in, on that same first page where it says, the city council finds the proposed amendments are in conformance with the statewide planning goals and Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan goals as addressed in the detailed findings attached as Exhibit A. I would like to add to that parentheses, the same findings adopted as part of ordinance 2014-21. So people are not confused that we did dual findings. At one point, we believed these were going to be adopted on the same day. Section one, again, I think it was Mr. Ross Smith's comment about the definition of accessory, I'm sorry, about vacation rental dwelling definition. He had brought up a point about being for exchange of value. And so I listened to him and I added the following words. So vacation rental dwelling VRD means a dwelling unit that, and then we've added this, for money, value, or other consideration, or the promise thereof, comma, is used rented, and the rest of the language remains unchanged from what was there in the past. And this, we had actually thought we had addressed this problem because we had stricken language later on where it referred to for no consideration. Because I was, it was pointed out that I kept saying, well, it says in the ordinance for no consideration. Well, we had actually stricken that language, but we're clarifying here and we made other internal changes to make it consistent. In paragraph C of that same section, it now reads, council directs that in residential accessory use VRD land use permitting LCMC 1780-050, striking the reference to subsection C. End code enforcement, including revocation proceedings under this title, continues on the same language. On page five of the ordinance, and I'm just going to read this as it's now changed, I'm striking some language because of your direction to remove it directly from the license process. Here's, I left it in the license process. I just said you could also do it outside the license process. So this section now, beginning line eight, paragraph B, subparagraph one, this administrative allowance is not a vested rights determination or a determination that the subject vacation rental dwelling is illegal nonconforming use. The allowance is offered by the city as an alternative dispute resolution mechanism to bring noncompliant property use in violation of the accessory use zoning limitations back in conformance with the adopted zoning code and comprehensive plan. The extended compliance period is provided by the city to acknowledge that the underfunded enforcement by the city and irresponsible real estate lending practices may have created a financial peril for property owners who rely upon a certain level of vacation rental income to pay their mortgages. The administrative allowance is an option available for property owners which they elect at any time in an executed compliance agreement approved by the municipal court or through the license process. There are two alternatives to the administrative allowance. One, the property owner may request, but is not guaranteed, a rezoning to the VR zone or any other available commercial zone, see LCMC 1780-050B2A, which does not carry the accessory use limitation. Or, the property owner may simply apply for a license or renewal as normal with the option to apply for a formal nonconforming use or vested rights determination as provided herein. Such determinations may be considered concurrently with quasi judicial zoning, land use, and license revocation proceedings. If the referenced nonconforming use vested rights determination is not filed within one year of the effective date of this ordinance, the determination is deemed waived. And what I did there was strike the one year of adoption and went with one year of effective date. Since you're delaying it by six months, you wouldn't want to take away six months of opportunity for people to submit that. Okay, in paragraph two of that same section, this is extending from page five to page six, submission of a rezone application does not waive the offered administrative allowance. Submission of a requested license renewal with the option to submit a rights/use determination during the licensed year is not a rejection of the allowance if the formal vested rights determination is never filed. Submission of a formal nonconforming use vested rights determination is a rejection of the settlement offer in the administrative allowance and waives the allowance. If the property owner demonstrates rights over and above the administrative allowance, the VRD use so established may continue in the residential zone, subject to all normal use termination provisions and any other applicable nonconforming use or vested rights limitations. If the use is found to be illegal, I changed it to EG, either not lawfully established or operating in violation of the incidental and subordinate accessory use limitation, the use and license will be revoked and there will be additional enforcement actions. Okay, on page eight, there was a mistake in the table. Under the column uses, under use categories, it now reads, principal use of the single-family dwelling as a vacation rental dwelling, subject to LCMC 1780-050 and LCMC 5.14. Again, in section 10, under violations, we address the consideration issue that was raised by Mr. Smith. So in section 10, it now, D now reads, and I'll just read the beginning part, unauthorized VRD use prohibited. The unauthorized use of a dwelling as a vacation rental dwelling in any zoning district is a violation of this code and an offense against the city. Unauthorized use includes offering or making available a vacation rental dwelling for occupancy use or rent for any exchange of money, value, or other consideration, or the promise thereof, without first obtaining the approval under city code. It then continues with the existing language that was in the ordinance. Subparagraph five on page 11 now reads, accessory use revocation, the city attorney, city manager, or planning director may initiate concurrent land use and/or license revocation proceedings before council or councils designate, consistent with chapter 1776 quasi judicial procedures and chapter 5.14, for any prior VRD accessory use approval in a residential zone if the owner is not operating under administrative allowance of LCMC 1780-50E or approved nonconforming use or vested rights determination, and there is evidence of noncompliance with the limitation. Revocation shall address the existing discretionary land use criteria, striking the word standard, in LCMC 1780-50B2 and LCMC 1708-020 accessory definition. The occupancy and tax records for the VRD shall be examined to determine if the owner has disregarded the incidental and subordinate accessory use limitation of the residential zone. This authorization is in addition to the existing authorization for revocation in sections 1780-50D1, 2, and 3, which are retained but renumbered as paragraphs 8A, B, and C And I just want to emphasize, revocation is not a new thing. It's allowed for in the current ordinance. 8A now reads, offering and making available a vacation rental for occupancy use or rent an exchange of, sorry, an exchange of money, value, or other consideration, or the promise thereof, without first obtaining city approval of the use under this section and violation, is a violation and enforceable as a Class A civil infraction. Proof of, and this is from the existing language, it's just restored. Proof of the dwelling is advertised, listed with an agent, or publicly described in any manner by the owner or owner's agent, as a vacation rental dwelling creates a rebuttable presumption that the vacation rental dwelling exists and is available for use, rent, or occupancy, or la written statements indicating a vacation rental dwelling is or was made available for use, rent, or occupancy, including but not limited to advertisement, offer, agreement, or correspondence in any medium made on or about the date of the alleged violation or admissible in court for the purposes of establishing a presumption that the vacation rental dwelling was available for occupancy on the date of the alleged violation, whether or not the dwelling was actually rented, used, or occupied on such date. When a vacation rental dwelling is shown to be made available on a particular date is presumed, the VRD continues to be made available unless the defendant proves otherwise. Again, these sections are in the existing ordinance and I just did not, the change is that they're not deleted. 8B now reads, operating a vacation rental dwelling in violation of any of the standards of subsection B of this section is a Class A violation, enforceable as provided in chapter 1.16 LCMC grounds to suspend or revoke a license under chapter 5.14 LCMC and a nuisance. And then 8C reads, a person convicted of violating this subsection is subject to a fine as a penalty as established in chapter 1.16 LCMC. Each day violation is a separate offense, separate violation. In section 12, there's a typographical error. Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17 zoning, chapter 1784 remedies, section 1784-050 inspection is hereby amended to clarify the city's intent to comply with the inspection warrant requirements. And then, as follows, and then that request, remainder of that section is unchanged. In section 13, the findings adopted section, I would make the same change we made earlier. In section 13, the findings adopted section, I would make the same change we made earlier, which would be to say, "The findings contained in awareness clauses of this ordinance, together with the findings set forth in exhibit A, parentheses, the same findings adopted as part of ordinance 2014-21, as well as the competent substantial evidence," it continues on without alteration. And then, Councilor Norikas had pointed out, the, on page four, line 36, there's an extra word, "the," which is stricken. Okay, so the next section would be the final section having to do with the effective date. Section 16, ordinance effective date, it now reads, "Notwithstanding chapter nine, section 9.3, this ordinance takes effect on July 1, 2015." And we added the today's date for the second reading date. I can read, let's, I'm going to read the title just because I made a change to the title, and then you can tell me if, what you want to do. This is the second reading of ordinance 2014-22, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning chapter 1708, section 1708-010, definitions adding clarifying language, amending sec, amending chapter 1780, section 1780-050, vacation rental dwellings, adding clarifying language, directing compliance with existing accessory use limitation and permitting and enforcement, requiring findings, adding an alternative nondiscretionary zoning compliance check for expedited review, amending VRD landscaping requirements, amending the existing GCRCTVC, OPD-MSH, OPD-IIM, OPD-OF, NPD-NBD, NPD-NBMU zoning categories to list VRDs as a permitted use, amending chapter 1780-050E existing uses, to create an administrative allowance for continuation of existing VRDs in the R1, RR, RM, and NPD-NCR residential zones, amending chapter 1784 remedies and section 1784-020 enforcement. If you're satisfied with those changes, and you don't want to mess around with any of the effective date provisions, then I would ask for a motion to approve second reading and adopt the ordinance with the changes as read.
So, gentlemen, you heard the changes read, and I guess the only, are there questions that you want to discuss, potential further changes? Okay. In that case, then certainly entertain a motion.
I would move that we adopt ordinance 2014, or accept the second reading and adopt ordinance 2014-22 with the changes.
Changes as read.
Changes as read.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve as changes made and read. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Norikas.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
N Ellingson.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to explain why abstain?
Yeah, okay, but, yeah.
Well, I haven't, I was not able because of the number of meetings that I missed. Supposedly, the last of the VRD information, or the cutoff, was sometime in March or early April or something. But I think that after that, maybe 100 more pages came in, and that was during the time that I was missing the meetings, and I caught up on part of it and didn't catch up on the other part, and didn't vote on the first part of this, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I could with somewhat of a clear conscience vote for it, but it would not be totally clear, and I'm not trying to cop out on anybody, but I'm just going to abstain.
Okay.
There was an additional public hearing and the record was reopened.
That's right.
And there was a significant amount of material was reopened into the record.
Okay.
I missed almost four months of meetings through no fault of my own.
Okay.
And I apologize for that.
Thank you. So, with that, was that the last of the vote? So, it passed. Thank you. We then have the next item, which is ordinance number 2014-23. This is also a second reading.
Hey, for that, I'll say to start with, on page seven, line 23, Councilor Norikas pointed out, the word AN needs to be changed to the word A, so I don't want to miss that. And I, I'm just going to go ahead and read, there are, there are no additional changes other than what's in the packet in yellow. Okay, so, page eight, under paragraph C, number one, or, I'm sorry, numbered paragraph two, "An accessory use VRD license recognizes the fact that in residential zones, C zones listed in LCMC 1780-050B2A, VRDs are permitted only as accessory uses incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the premises as the owner's vacation home. The accessory use license authorizes 30, 30 in parentheses, VRD rental nights per calendar year for expedited review approvals, or such other number contained in the VRD land use approval under LCMC 1780-050. After the authorized VRD rental nights are used, the license expires and ceases to authorize VRD usage by its own terms. Revocation is not required. Further VRD use after expiration is unlicensed and unauthorized VRD use." What I did in the next paragraph was simply rewrite the entire paragraph and strike the language that was there. So, I'll read first the language that's being added, replace the language in the proposed ordinance. Paragraph three now reads, "A special VRD license will be issued to, one, existing accessory use VRDs originally approved by permit or conditional use, electing to proceed under the administrative allowance incorporated into the license. Two, existing accessory use VRDs originally approved by permit or conditional use, electing to proceed with the option to file for administrative allowance by compliance agreement. Parenthesis three, existing VRDs originally approved by permit or conditional use with a final quasi-judicial order verifying nonconforming use status or vested rights. End parentheses four, existing VRDs originally approved by permit or conditional use with a nonconforming use status or vested rights application in process. End five, VRDs in Rhodes End not currently subject to city zoning limitations." So, those are the types of options you have, and it simply recognizes the division between, you've already gone through the process and either got an allowance or vested rights determination, or you're in process. So, the language that's stricken and was just replaced is, "A special VRD license will be issued to, one, existing accessory use VRDs originally approved by permit or conditional use, electing to proceed under administrative allowance. Two, existing VRDs with verified or for 2015 in process, nonconforming use status or vested rights. And three, VRDs in Rhodes End not currently subject to city zoning limitations." So, that language is stricken. Paragraph A, under that section, again, this is to be consistent with your direction to separate the administrative allowance and those matters from the license and make it available. "The special license for administrative allowance, whether incorporated into the license or added later by compliance agreement, authorize 180 VRD rental nights." The rest of paragraph A remains unchanged. In paragraph B, "The special license for VRDs issued following a nonconforming use verification or vested rights determination shall be the number of VRD rental nights demonstrated licensed applicants for this special license for the 2016 license year only, who submit complete license renewal applications shall have the option to submit a quasi-judicial land use, nonconforming use verification, vested rights determination before July 1, 2016." That recognizes the extension by one year of the time to submit. And then it reads, "Applicants in process will receive a special license which protects the applicants from prosecution for no license," and that continues unchanged for the rest of that. Paragraph B. Paragraph C now reads, "The special license for VRDs located in Rhodes End recognizes that city land use limitations do not currently apply to the Rhodes End area as defined in ordinance 2012-10. Accordingly, land use criteria in LCMC 514-06OB and land use certifications in LCMC 514-06OB7 do not apply to Rhodes End unless the landowner has otherwise agreed in a contract with the city. Since the first reading of this ordinance, we discovered that there are some property owners in Rhodes End that have recorded documents agreeing to some of the limitations in the city VRD ordinance. And so, we're not going to affect a contract with this ordinance, so we're just recognizing, except as otherwise agreed." Okay, on page 13, which starts as item V5 on the end of page 12, this is under residential zones. The language is modified to read, starting at the beginning of the paragraph, "The director verifies the VRD received a land use approval acknowledging compliance with the site design criteria and other applicable standards in LCMC 1780-050, and that the previously approved accessory VRD is proceeding under a license with either a completed or in process nonconforming use verification or vested rights determination in accordance with the terms and conditions of such approvals." And then added six, "License renewals do not involve a land use process and do not indicate accessory use compliance or noncompliance." Again, accessory use, under the current code, except for 30 days, which will be separate, is a discretionary matter. So, it requires a land use discretionary enforcement process. So, a VRD license renewal is not a land use discretionary process. So, we're not making a ruling on whether or not your VRD violated the accessory use limitation when we renew your license. That's a separate process, and I just wanted to make it clear. And staff does, absolutely does not want to have to go through a land use process every time they process one of the 530 VRD renewals. Paragraph, or, page 13, again, the issue I mentioned, "Except where the property owner has otherwise agreed in a contract with the city, comma, lawfully established VRDs in Rhodes End as defined in ordinance 2012-10, existing and lawfully operating as of July 1, 2013, shall not be counted as more than one VRD ownership when applying the VRD ownership limitation of this chapter." That simply recognizes, as I mentioned before, that there are existing agreements out there. Paragraph two, and this is in the safety standards portion of the ordinance on page 15, with regard to staircases and railings, it now reads as follows, "Staircases with four or more risers and lofts, platforms, decks, or porches that are more than 30 inches above the floor, below if inside the dwelling, or above the finished grade if outside the dwelling, shall have hand and/or guardrails. Interior and exterior hand railings shall be between 30 to 38 inches in height as measured from the toe of the stair. Guardrails shall be a minimum of 34 inches in height for stairs, and at least 36 inches in height for flat surfaces. All hand and guardrails shall be secure, and guardrails shall have openings with a maximum width of nine inches, or the required width at the time the railings were installed if the required width was less than nine inches, between guardrails and/or on open, and open stairs." And then added language, "The provisions of this paragraph do not apply to landscape stair features, except where such stairs provide direct access to the structure or accessory structure. The applicant has the option to close or improve a noncompliant feature provided the feature does not provide needed access." And there are no additional changes in the safety standard portion. I will point out that an issue has come up about the certifications with regard to features like the building code stair features that we're just talking about. The application for renewal has a certification you sign saying, "I hereby certify it meets the building code requirements." But if the inspector has identified a problem with the stairs, people don't want to sign that because there's a problem. It's been identified, and they know they have to fix it. So, what staff is doing is striking that paragraph from the certification, having them, and letting them sign the long form with all the certifications except for that one, and then writing a separate certification that says, "Yeah, I certify it's in compliance, except for this thing, which we've agreed to fix by this date." So, people aren't signing something under penalty of perjury when we all know that, you know, it's not currently in compliance, but they've agreed to bring it in compliance. Now, the delayed effective date of this ordinance, if you note this language here, does not impact the delayed effective date, well, does not address ordinance 2014-07, which is effective July, or January 1. So, I'm going to come back to that, but I want you to recognize that this language here, except for the tweaks that I just read, is going to be in effect on January 1, unless you want to alter it with a delay in that effective date, but I'll come back to that. The next paragraph that's affected was on page 19, under mandatory occupancy records. There were some ca, there's some issues raised about the guest records and, obviously, the city current ordinance says that we can request that those records be submitted. This ordinance had added the language that they had to be submitted at the time of renewal. Staff doesn't want them at the time of renewal because we're not making the accessory use determinations at the time of renewal. As I just alluded to, it's not the time to make that land use decision. So, the language now reads, "Maintenance of guests and owner occupancy records when the VRD is in a residential zone and operating as an accessory or conditional use. The owner shall maintain a detailed record for each tenancy of the vacation rental, including a log of all vacation rental dwelling occupancy nights. The record shall include the name, address, telephone number of the tenants, and the dates of the rental period and associated rental charges. The detailed record shall also detail the owner's personal use and occupancy of the vacation rental dwelling. The record shall be maintained as a confidential record by the owner-manager. The record shall be available to the city, for city inspection upon request." The rest of the language is stricken, and then it reads, "Except for law enforcement and tax collection purposes, the city shall treat all such information as confidential record submissions to the city, and shall protect such records from disclosure to any other person or entity in accordance with the process of the Oregon Public Records Law." Under site requirements, this is paragraph 8A on page 21, there was just a typographical error. I think it was line seven, the word is requirements with a S. On page 22, landscaping residential zones, the owner must landscape, again, it was a typographical error. I know the city recorder can correct those, but we're going to just point them out while we're here. On page 33, paragraph B1, starting on, I think it's line 32, "Failing or refusing to submit required records, parentheses, guest and personal use records, to the city upon request," striking the, or as part of renewal application, as I just city upon request," striking the, or as part of renewal application, as I just mentioned, that's a change to be consistent. And the last change I have is ordinance effective date, and now reads, "Notwithstanding Chapter 9, Section 9.3, this ordinance takes effect on July 1, 2015," striking the 30 days after the date of adoption, standard language. And I guess I'll read the title. "The second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 5 Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter 5.14 Vacation Rental Dwelling License, Adding Criteria Standards to the VRD License Provisions of the Code." We're looking for a motion to approve second reading and adopt the ordinance with the changes as read.
No move.
Is it a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second discussion? Yes, Norakis?
Mr. Appicello, in that last section you read concerning effective date, didn't I hear you say earlier that this would be an effective date of January 1?
The effective date of this ordinance, consistent with ordinance 2014-22, will be July 1, 2015. Inside this ordinance are the safety standards.
Yes.
That were adopted in May of 2014. Those safety standards are not yet effective. They're in here and they're shown in regular type, not in underline type, not in bold type, they're in regular type because they're adopted currently. What I was pointing out was that those, those changes are effective starting January 1. So, there's a little, the changes that we just made to them in this ordinance will not go into effect until July. So, the little changes I was reading about the landscape stairs and the, in the yard, those won't go into effect unless I do another ordinance ahead of, you know, like next meeting. I could do an ordinance that makes those changes because this is not a land use ordinance, we can do it in one meeting. And you can also delay the effective date of the safety standards if you, if you wanted to. Right now, they, they were adopted in May, people have had plenty of time, but if you wanted to delay the effective date consistent with this ordinance, you could do that.
Currently, the effective date is January 1.
For the safety standards.
2016.
2015.
2015.
Yes. So, you don't have to do anything in this ordinance, you could simply, if you adopt this ordinance, you could direct me to come back at the next meeting and if you want to delay the effective date of ordinance 2014-07, I can come back with a one-line ordinance that does that. If you, if you, if you think that's an issue, and you might want to hear from planning staff about how that works, because right now, they're apprising people of, they're doing inspections, they're telling people, you know, you need a guardrail here or a handrail there. So, they're, they're really trying to get ahead of it because that ordinance did say it would apply for this license year. But there has been concern out there, as I mentioned, that people that have things identified are concerned that they're signing a certification saying that everything's fixed when they know something's fixed and they want to know, "How much time do I have to fix it?" If you delay the effective date of the health and safety standards, you would basically be telling them, "Hey, you have until July 1 to fix it." So, that's a way to address it. It doesn't require that we make any additional changes here, but something you could think about, and we could do it at the next meeting, you just, by the end of this meeting, you should tell me which direction you want to go or if you want to even consider it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
At the time we adopted those health and safety standards, we recognized that there was a significant liability exposure, not only for the VRD owners, for the property owners, but also for the city. So, because we hadn't adopted a health and safety standards. And so, I think we need to stay with the, with the January 1.
And I, I would concur, it sounds like there's a, planning staff has already found a workaround.
Yeah.
You know, and certainly the July 1 date, you, it identifies it for people and they know come then, depending on what their issue could be, that could be the, the workaround.
Well, I believe the existing ordinance had some language about the building official could give up to 180 days to fix an identified problem. So, I think we have some leeway in the existing code and the, signing a different certification that said.
Right.
"I'm exercising my ability to take the time to fix it," got around, it was a workaround, around the problem.
And this might be a good time to, again, plug that the inspection, you know, is due and with renewals, and I don't think, you know, don't expect staff to be ready to accommodate a mass flood. It's part of the reason why we had this early, to notify people to get the inspections out of their way if they're planning to renew in 2015. But going back to this ordinance, any further discussion, clarity, issues?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This council's critics continue to contend that we are ignoring the will of our constituents in spite of the clearly stated desire of a majority of registered voters who participated in the city's most recent survey that indicated their wish to impose tight limits on VRDs in their neighborhoods. 62% indicated their desire to discourage VRD growth and 38% desired to encourage VRD growth. These citizens voted this council into office. These citizens are our constituents and we need feel absolutely no quote, "shame," unquote, nor have any trouble whatsoever looking into the camera, nor facing the audience in these chambers as we consider these ordinances. Practice of repeating a falsehood over and over again in spite of documented evidence to the contrary can be persuasive. I trust the majority of our citizens will not be taken in by this tactic.
Thank you, sir. Any other further discussion? Roll call, please. Call for vote.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Abstain.
Norakis?
Yes.
And Sprig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have the next ordinance, which is a parks use regulation ordinance. So, if you want, I'll give a staff report on that, and then we can go to the council members after that.
Okay.
So, the, the next ordinance, basically, I appeared before the Parks Board, the Parks, I guess technically it's called the Parks and Recreation Board in January of this year. And we talked about the fact that we have signage in our parks that say things like "no golfing" and other things, and we don't have an ordinance that, that stands behind that. So, we talked about what regulations we liked, and they did their homework. I gave them ordinances from other jurisdictions, and they kind of picked and chose and said, "We like these provisions, we don't like these provisions." And we compiled a list. Then we got distracted by some other things over the summer, and I got back together with the Parks Board and they reviewed this proposed ordinance that you have in front of you. Now, it's kind of wide-ranging and comprehensive, and there may be things in here you don't agree with. Pretty much, there are things in here that correspond to what's in our existing code. Because of the reorganization, I struck out the entire existing code, including the changes we made earlier this year on exclusive use, and I added it all new, but a lot of it hasn't changed, it's just reorganized. But you'll see a lot of new provisions, and they mostly have to do with prohibitions. I won't go through them all, but mostly, it, there's two things, there are two important things in this ordinance. One is there's a, a list of prohibitions, things you can't do, and I didn't put in some of the silly things I've seen in ordinances like no use of torpedoes are allowed in the park. And I, there are at least two cities that have that provision. But we did recognize that some uses in the parks conflict with other uses. And so, we don't want to micromanage and have the council micromanaging our park system, but we certainly wanted you to delegate authority to an individual, and in this ordinance, I say it's the city manager or designee here and after referred to as director. And I did that because the people that codify our code get kind of annoyed with the constant city, not that I say city term, city manager or designee. Constantly using that term has gotten them kind of like, they keep questioning us, "Do you mean this or do you mean that?" And there's administrative provisions about appeal from the city manager to the city manager, and they get confused. So, we, I just started out by defining, city manager or designee is used in this ordinance as director. So, there's, there's two things. There's a list of prohibitions, some of which you may agree with, some of which you not, may not. And then there's also delegation of authority to the Parks Director or Director, whoever that person might be, could be Public Works Director, it could be Gail at the Community Center, whoever it is, to establish special use areas where uses conflict. So, it may not be that, there's like this, Junior Olympics is an example. Normally, you wouldn't say, you wouldn't expect to see people throwing javelins in the city park, but occasionally, like the Junior Olympics or whatever, they want to have an event and they might have it in the park, and so, you really need to have some kind of authorization to allow that. So, the director is authorized to say, "This area is allow, you're allowed to throw a javelin or you're allowed to throw a discus or a shot put." Recognizing that that use will conflict with other uses potentially dangerous and could damage the grass or other facilities. So, but those, that delegation of authorities to the director to make those determinations. The director could approve any of those uses or none of them. Okay? So, you're delegating authority for special use areas. It excludes open space areas. Nobody can have a special use area in an open space. Nobody's going to be throwing a discus or a javelin in an open space area. With the possible exception of, there was a primitive camping authorization in here, and you would have to determine if you felt that use was consistent with open space use. And in talking to the Forest Service, they believe that authorization to use property or Forest Service land for primitive camping helps people appreciate the resource, but doing so under the control of a permit is the way it's controlled. So, that's just an example. I could go through all the various provisions here. I haven't really had many questions about the ordinance here. I will touch base on what Gail mentioned earlier about the donations. We, this is in page 16. "We say that if you would like to give us a cash donation for the purchase of a functional item, like a concrete bench or a picnic table, something that we have a standard for, it's durable, it'll withstand the winters here, it's not made out of broken glass and hypodermic needles, you know, we've actually got a standard for it. If you want to give us a cash donation and like we had today for a functional item like that, we'll accept it, it does not need to come to the city council. You've made that decision. You should probably adopt by resolution or something, you should probably bless, this is our standard city picnic table or our standard city bench. But those things wouldn't have to come to you. Only when it was a non-standard donation or a proposal to do a volunteer project in your park would you need to get into those details." So, that's how I kind of addressed it. And in this process, we did recognize that the Parks Board has developed some donation criteria for their own review when they make a recommendation to you. And so, I believe I mentioned in the council communication that, under staff recommendation, I'd recommend that council conduct and approve first reading of the proposed ordinance and further authorize the policies and procedures developed by the Parks and Rec Board for recommendations on acceptance of donations. So, there's really two actions being requested. The first would be the first reading of the ordinance. If you're ready for me to read, I'll read, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Questions of, of council? I had a couple of observations, but I don't know if it's all right that this be appropriate time. I noticed what appeared to be some inconsistency in some of the, you know, no smoking, for example. That seems to be a, a thing of interest in parks these days, or a move, a move to no smoking in parks, as well as no alcohol except by special event permit. I found it interesting that you could special permit alcohol, but you couldn't special permit smoking. So, you know.
Actually, that's not, that's not a strange question. Our existing, I actually asked Debbie Mamonie about this because she's now handling special events permits, and our existing ordinance, if you go to the end of this ordinance, you'll see stricken, our existing ordinance says no smoking in parks or in the open space on the trails anywhere. That's what our existing ordinance says. In doing our research on this, it was identified by both the Parks Board and myself that some cities authorize smoking areas as part of special event permits. So, if you have a special event and you want to have a designated smoking area during that special event, there's authorization in the special event for that. So, I, I asked her, "Do you want to go there, do you want to not go there?" And she said, "Never had anybody actually come forward and say, 'We'd like to have a designated smoking area.'" So, at least in her experience with it this year, she hadn't had that experience. And since the existing ordinance prohibited it outright, we didn't want to add it. That doesn't mean you can't choose to add it, but the existing ordinance also says no alcohol in parks. However, one of the exceptions to that is the special event ordinance allowance for alcohol in parks.
And I guess why I went to that was just wondering about, you know, enforcement again, and I, I found it interesting that you could, you know, bring a bottle in, you, as long as you had a permit. And I, you know, I'm not a smoker, so it doesn't bother me, but I just find the inconsistency. I'd prefer to have at least identified that you could ask for a permit, the same kind of wording.
If you, if you'd like me to add that flexibility, you could, we can talk about it, and you could decide to adopt it or not adopt it at the next reading. I can prepare some language for your consideration.
Do other, you know, council look to put in, at least be the consistent wording that to acknowledge, except by a special event permit?
That's cigarettes only, right?
That's the only one I found.
Just cigarettes only as far as smoking.
Not authorized to smoke anything else outside.
When you get, after July the 15th, you're going to have, you know, pot parties and things like this, I just, you know, it's one of these things.
But it's not authorized, it's not allowed outside, so.
That answers that. I'm just looking for consistency. One, if you're going to have wording on one, you ought to have the same opportunity on the other.
I'm a smoker, and it, and it doesn't bother me to, to leave it the way it is.
And.
It really doesn't. You know, we're used to standing in the street.
Well, you're not even able to stand in the street, you're going to walk up a long way.
Well, you know, it, most people that smoke, if, if, if that's going to be an issue, they just won't go to the event. If it's, if they want to go to the event, then they take that into consideration and don't worry about it.
Okay.
The alcohol thing is a little different because if you're having a wedding in a park, you want to have some champagne, then, then you can get a special permit or a special event thing, and that, that's a little different. The other part of, of smoking, of the smoking part is that, you know, cigarettes are bad enough to smell, but you get some people out there with some really stinky stogies and get downwind from them, and you're, you're kind of like, "Oh, no." So, I mean, I, I- So, I mean, I just don't see it as an issue and I think we should just leave it alone.
Okay.
Mr. Appicello, in our current regulations, smoking is prohibited.
Yes.
And?
As is alcohol.
As is alcohol, correct. So, I would support your consistency desire, Mr. Mayor.
You know, looking to direct, you know, to include a dinner or-
Go along with it.
Why not?
And Gordy, you're a smoker, so, you know, you can weigh in heavier.
Well, I go either way, but I think smoking should be allowed like that.
With through a permit, at least.
So, associated with a special event-
Right.
Smoking in designated areas.
Right.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Same wording.
And I'll give you some proposed language for the next reading.
Yep. So, we can do the first reading-
Yes.
-without it and then just modify it.
Yes.
That's, okay. Any other identifications?
This did receive a favorable recommendation from the Parks Board and park staff seem to be in favor of it. It has been routed through staff and I don't know if staff has anything want to add, but at least for the first reading, we feel pretty comfortable.
Well, and I, again, appreciate, you know, one, going through the, our committees and the Park Board and giving them the opportunity to take a look at that and weigh in before it comes in. Make one, it makes me feel better, you know, as it comes, that it's been vetted. So, thank you if you'd pass that on. With that then, entertain a motion.
I just got to read the first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, she's jumping ahead of that game.
This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, Chapter 12.16, Park Use Regulations, Adding New Park Use Regulations and Distinguishing Between Exclusive Use Permit and Special Event Permit Triggers. We're looking for approval of first reading and setting second reading for December 22nd, 2014.
We're moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and setting the second reading to December 22nd. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate this time, I have a motion to make.
Okay.
The city considered and rejected the consensus group's request to repeal the accessory use limitation applicable to vacation rental dwellings on residentially zoned land. The city manager and city attorney are authorized and directed to enforce the existing accessory use limitation in land use permitting and in enforcement actions, including quasi-judicial license and land use revocation proceedings. City attorney may exercise prosecutorial discretion and may enter into such compliance agreements as necessary to equitably resolve disputes.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You know, this, as the motion states, it just says enact the current ordinances regarding the accessory use limitation rather than weighting, it's not the new one, it's the one we currently have in place, the ordinance.
And I'll just point out that while you're considering a quadrant, it would be silly for us to take enforcement actions in a quadrant where you're considering the VR rezone. So, we'll basically pay attention to what you're doing with the quadrant VR applications. And once you get past a quadrant, we'll look carefully at that zone to see what's going on. So, we're not going to, you know, do anything silly.
Okay. We have a motion with a second for approval of this motion. Roll call, please.
Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item of business would be comments from citizens present. I see one staying with us, well, there's lots of citizens, but one public. Thank you for staying with us. We got abandoned there.
That's okay.
Linda Roy.
Linda Roy, I'm wearing my real estate hat today, Lincoln City Realty. I'm not going to weigh in on your decisions because it's already been made and I was kind of missing in action during that whole process. I would like to request, however, to have staff or somebody, and nothing against you as to your language and your ability to speak my language, but I didn't understand half of what you said. And I know that there were some people in the audience that really still don't understand the language of the ordinances. And so, I was wondering if it's possible to have someone create a bullet, you know, something really simple that can be put on the website, here's what these ordinances are, and for further detail, go to ordinance blah, 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 blah. It's super confusing and there's a lot of stuff to read through to really understand. And I think that's where some misunderstandings might be happening is because people don't understand what's being said.
So, Linda, I appreciate those words and thanks because always looking for better ways to communicate for clarity. And not to put you on the spot, but have you gone to the city website and clicked on the link for the one ordinance that we had previously passed regarding the VR zone?
Not recently, not since that was passed. So, I have not visited that.
Would you? Because there's an example of some questions and answers and formats and stuff, trying to do just what you're talking about, but-
I will, I will go ahead and do that.
If I can, and perhaps you could communicate it to your industry. We can only spoon feed so much, stay out of the coffee shops where people will like to discuss this stuff without it in front of them. And so, I'm somehow need to find a way that we can be more helpful, certainly have the right information and the ordinances are there.
I think what I'm thinking of is, you know, being in real estate and this will impact, this decision does impact real estate and how it does business into the future and no, nobody really knows what that's going to look like, right? But, there's a lot of questions about people who are currently looking to purchase, purchase homes that knows that there is this flux going on and are wanting those answers. And I struggle, I would like to be able to print something off of the website and say, here's a good start for you to look at. I'd rather it be your language rather than my interpretation of what is actually being said. And so, for me, I'm looking for some, a one-page thing that I can just spit out, you know, with the basics of what is, what it's saying and then directing them to further, because I certainly don't want to interpret for anybody.
We did create a flow chart and it was because a citizen called me and said, you know, really help me, a flow chart. And so, there is a flow chart. I don't know where it is exactly, but we did create one.
Let us work on that because-
Okay.
We too would like the real estate community to be more responsible for the information and make sure it gets out there.
Well, and I can certainly take it to the MLS board as well, where they can have a link for each Realtor, you know, that they can use. It's just getting the information out and, you know, when people don't understand what's being read, it gets misconstrued. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, your patience sitting there to-
Here.
Yeah. Not seeing any others. Let's go with comments. Mr. Ryan.
Well, I just want to point out that there is going to be a brand-new play opening on the 18th at Theater West called Sorry, Wrong Chimney. It's pretty doggone funny. It has absolutely no social redeeming qualities. It's just fun. So, I hope everyone gets an opportunity to go see it.
Good. Thanks for that, Billy. Gary.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's not quite that late yet, so if you could allow me-
Sure.
And this, this might be my last council meeting, so you won't have to, and it's close to being your last one, so you won't have to be agitated when I, when I do this because this is, this is it.
I'll give you airtime. Go ahead.
Thank you. Earlier, it was asked of us when we commented on some of the things that we remembered about Mr. Hocker. And I can't remember exactly how many of you were serving here on the council this time, but the community center was undergoing a renovation. And part of that was the addition of what is now used to play basketball. And that portion of the renovation just had horrible, almost irreparable mistakes made to it during the course of construction. And we didn't find out about it until after, basically, it was too late. And it was one of those things that would have cost, the contractor, if my memory serves me correctly, basically took a powder on us and, and left. And Mr. Hocker, because he had had some construction background, or maybe a lot of it, was able to go through a process of what to me was kind of a little-known insurance, the availability of an insurance that got some really good contractors out here. And to my estimation, they fixed everything up as, as if it had been new. And instead of the city suffering, as I stated earlier, what could have been a several hundred, or I have no idea, but it was in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, that bill all went over to the insurance. And David pretty much took the responsibility to see that that got done and he did it. And I've never forgotten it. The, something that I didn't see on the board in the judge's office, but it's always been close to me in my mind when I think about things that have been meaningful, that our council has been involved with, and of course, you know, the leadership of the city. But, we were, we were able, and I was told by a hospital board member and someone that worked real high up at North Lincoln Hospital to contribute seed money, that basically started the process of building a childcare center, which at the time in the city, the much smaller childcare center that wasn't available to nearly enough people had gone out of business and it was very, very badly needed. And North Lincoln Hospital has operated that, I'm sure at a big loss to them, and it's been a valuable part of our community. And that contribution money came from a grant which we had invested that enabled when the investment was sold to have money to do that, plus take care of some other things. Earlier, and it was mentioned as a form of denigration, actually, open space is very little, I think, understood by most, by some of us in the community. The Open Space Fund was actually an idea that was started by a council that, or at least a leadership, a mayoral leadership prior to the one that I'm presently serving under. And a lot of that property, in fact, I think most all of it, you'd be hard-pressed to find a piece of it that was not leveraged purpose, purchased. And by that, I mean that the people that were selling it had wanted it to stay in a state of openness and oftentimes made a very good price to the city and sometimes even added additional land to the city. And I would state to you that it has not taken property off the tax rolls, but actually enhanced property tax roll value by virtue of bringing up the values of the land, of land that it surrounds, that surrounds it. And it's going to be available for generations long after we're gone. David, there's something that not very many, once again, it's just one of those things that it's hard to realize how complicated it is unless you're involved in it. That Drift Creek Water Right we got from Kernville, I think took almost 10 years. And I don't think without David's keeping track of exactly what was going on with various of the Water Right Board and Boards and other things that we would even have that right. And that right is basically our safety net. And any of us with businesses or homes or that have an investment in this community should be deeply grateful for the Drift Creek Water Right. A project that was near and dear to my heart, which quite frankly is the reason I stayed on for as long as I did, was the annexation of Rhodes End. This is a very complicated and sometimes contentious and very, very time-consuming. I think it took more than 10 years. And I think it was long past time and, and I'm very grateful that, that it happened. When people mention that we bought Cascade Head, yeah, we bought Cascade Head, we paid probably 15 cents on the dollar. When I say we, the taxpayer of Lincoln City paid 15 cents on the dollar. And I've heard things mentioned that we have done like a million-dollar sewer pump. That sewer pump has a lot more to do with areas other than just Cascade Head. And Cascade Head basically fell into our lap like a pot of money that we would have been negligent, extremely foolish to have walked away from it. It might be interesting for some people to know that the opportunity of Cascade Head is not totally unlike this building that we're sitting in. It was not being used, it was empty, it was not, nobody had the capability of using it and it was purchased probably for 15 to 18 cents on the dollar. I would also like to state, the work that is going on in the gap right now, I don't believe would be taking place if it were not for this council and the city staff and finally, and especially the mayor. It wasn't that many years ago that we were told that we could not, or we did not have a relationship with ODOT and that it would take a generation to reestablish one. And with many people's hard, hard work, that, that is taking place as 30, it was supposed to have been done 30 years ago. And so, thank you for finally getting that done. Bearing in mind all of the other stuff that's in the judges' chambers, this is not to mention the continued advancements in the police department, the library, the community center, the cultural center, urban renewal projects, which I believe will return taxpayer money to Lincoln City taxpayers. It's been said time and time again that it won't. And you can say something all you want and if it isn't true, it isn't going to make it true. It just simply isn't. If I've left anybody out, I guess I said public works and finance. And finally, the last thing I would like to say is, I think someone earlier, having mentioned talk of someone or someones of us doing something up here to get even or to get even with something is simply hearsay and not true. If that were the case, I would know about it and I would simply tell you right now. And I'm going to tell you that it is not so. All of the men that I have served with up here have been honorable in their council responsibilities and it has been my privilege to serve with you. I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Many years on council, so, you know, we'll give you that time to, you know, go through. Mr. Norakis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I would like to correct a published false and misleading statement written by Rick Beasley in the Wednesday, November 20, 2014- by Rick Beasley in the Wednesday, November 20, 2014 edition of the Newport News Times. He wrote, quote, "The decision on which finalists would be offered, the $440,000 per year position rested on the events of Tuesday when candidates faced an all-day round of orientation and interviews," unquote. Lincoln City did not advertise the city manager position at $140,000 a year. The city advertised the city manager position at $115,000 to $135,000 plus benefits, depending on qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norakis. Mr. Sprague?
Couple things. Um, I think with the VRD issue and the zones and what have you has, has been allowed to be overlooked in that the determinations that we made this evening, in a lot of ways, mirrors the consensus committee's suggestions. They came up with yes, no zones and the VR zone is quite similar, or it can be similar depending on its makeup and the different quadrants. And I just think that it's important that people understand that we did listen to the consensus committee and that we took, uh, a lot of what they, they provided to us as, uh, something we should adopt and we have. Secondly, Mr. Warner tonight, in his ravings, um, suggested that we were wasting, uh, local taxpayers' dollars by funding different, uh, programs and what have you, when in fact the dollars he was talking about don't come from local taxpayers, they come from the TRT. And TRT is not paid by local taxpayers, it's paid by the visitors and the tourists that come here. So I think it's important that when statements like that are made, that we have an opportunity to at least correct them. And I would hope that people making rash statements like that would do better research. Thank you.
While you're staying on the council, uh, you know, a little longer and you can keep correcting those statements.
Well, based on his, uh, threat, it sounds like he may want to recall, so I don't know.
Gordy?
I guess mine is pretty light. I'd like to speak with Mr. Hawker again. Mr. Hawker, uh, at the last meeting I asked you if you would use your muscle and try to get street power to turn on some streetlights for us. Can you give us a report, please?
Well, I can give you a partial report. I'll try to, I'll try to, uh, follow up with more. Um, we did review, um, TAFT, our Public Works Department did, and they found 30 Pacific Power lights that were not functioning and turned those pole numbers over to North, uh, to, um, Pacific Power. It's getting late. Um, Police Department is starting at the north end of town, um, and inventorying those lights that are out, uh, with pole numbers. Again, we find that we can get a lot more response, quicker response if we have pole numbers. And, uh, there's a, there's a number on each, each, what I'd call telephone pole, light pole, uh, at the base, uh, or, or near the bottom, um, that we're collecting and we'll get those to Pacific Power. That said, um, we'll have to keep on, on them in order to get them, uh, turned back on. Some of the lights, and particularly the ones in Ocean Lake, uh, belong to the city and they're not maintained by, um, Pacific Power. And those, we're going to be doing, I think, some major retrofit, we've had, had some trouble with the fixtures that are there. We'll, we'll keep you informed. Uh, I'm not ignoring this and we have started on it, um, get the lights turned on as quick as we can.
You.
You bet. Thank you for, um...
Mayor?
Mentioning it.
One additional thing I'm, I forgot to mention. The streetlight at Southeast First, the brand-new one that we just put in, the cycle on it isn't cycling properly. Um, you can be driving down and be the only person on the highway and you get down to Southeast First and all of a sudden it turns red and then it stays green both, uh, opposite ways for a great deal of time.
Oh, thank you for telling me that.
And so it's just a matter of, of setting that up. And I think they're supposed to be smart lights, so, uh, they, they just need to be regulated.
Kathy, do me a favor, since I shut my computer down, will you send me a, an email reminding me of that, please? It's getting just about late enough that I might forget that.
Good.
You know, as, as you bring that, and I, I, forgive me if you've heard it all before, but, um, one of the deals that we've got with ODOT is we've been, we, the city, have been, um, privileged to get one of their work programs for the lights and, and it's to fine-tune all the streetlights, uh, up and down. But this one, since it's new, there's probably...
But that's, that's a year from now, so...
Yeah. Well, actually, no, it's...
It's, it's not.
Yeah, they're doing it now.
Yeah, it's, it's a $500,000 investment that ODOT's making in an adaptive program for our traffic signals that is going to do a lot for us.
To make, to make sure the smart lights are smarter, it really is what they've described.
That, that particular one really needs to be smart. The rest of them seem to be working fine.
Good.
They're going to work better.
Yeah.
Good.
Henry? Nothing? All right. You know, if this was Rotary, we'd charge you, fine you for having your, uh, name and picture in the paper last Friday, um, but we won't do that, uh, taking my publicity away. Uh, if I can, I, I, gentlemen, pay attention here because I, I need you for two more meetings. You need to be, uh, in attendance December 22nd, next city council meeting, and then you need to be here on the January 12th in order to allow for a quorum. Um, because you have to have a quorum before you can swear in new electants. So if you thought you were leaving and not being here, um, please change that schedule. I need a quorum. Get new council...
What are you looking down this way for, Mayor? Because you two are, are leaving. I'm just looking that way.
Hey, maybe we just don't show up, huh?
And Gary?
I, I, I owe you.
Okay.
I, I missed so many meetings.
Um, also, uh, if you would, um, tomorrow, uh, there's two opportunities. If you've been invited and, uh, this is also for the public, um, at the Bijou at 8:30 in the morning, um, there's a discussion on the mid-block crosswalks. Uh, we've invited, uh, the business owners and, uh, property and business owners of, uh, Ocean Lake, uh, in meeting, but, uh, it's open. In addition, tomorrow night, if you're interested, at the Community College in Lincoln City is another program on the recently released economic study for Lincoln County, um, at 6:30. So there's two nice opportunities. And then lastly, if the public really is watching, um, it now and on the reruns, that reminder that committees, boards, uh, commissions, uh, have vacancies and we need the public citizens to be involved, specifically thinking of planning commission where there'll be at least two to three vacancies come the 1st of January. Um, so we're not in a position to appoint those because they're not empty yet. Um, and so if you'd get your applications in, um, it would be helpful. With that, I don't have anything else and would be pleased to call it a night.
Adieu.